So this August 5th, 2020, meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board will come to order. Kenny Rotner will not be in attendance today. He is at Mass General Hospital. He asked me to convey that to you. As many in the community know, he's undergoing treatment for cancer and pain management, and certainly our thoughts are with him as he hopefully gets some new treatment, new technology to treat the pain that he's has made his life very, very difficult over the last few weeks. Our thoughts are with him. This is still technically a meeting conducted under the state of emergency, so I am required to read a statement, some of which applies to this meeting, some of which may not, but I'll read it verbatim as required. "As Chair of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am affirming that we are: A) Providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing Microsoft Teams for this electronic meeting. All members of the school board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, participate in the meeting through dialing the following phone number: 1-603-766-5646 and ID code 461362; or by clicking on the following website address: http://www.orcst.org/stream. B) Providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting using Microsoft Team or telephonically. Instructions have also been provided on the website of the ORCSD Board Agenda for August 5th, 2020. C) Providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anybody has a problem, please call 603-280-4202 or email at orcsd-video@orcst.org. D) Adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during the meeting shall be done by roll-call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking roll-call attendance. And I don't think this is particularly relevant. When each member states their presence, please state whether there's a person in the room with you during the meeting, which is required under the right-to-know law. I don't think that's quite applicable today. So I'll take the attendance. Thomas Newkirk here. Denise Day?
Here.
Al Howland?
Here.
Dan Klein?
Here.
Brian Sisneros? Ken Throne, he's absent. Michael Williams?
Here.
Is that everybody?
What's up?
Did I get you?
That's what I was saying.
Okay, okay.
Still here.
Still here.
I've been known to pass over people.
So we have to approve the agenda. I have no changes to the agenda. Are there any changes? Could I have a motion to approve the agenda? Denise?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Moved by Denise, or second? Second by Brian. Roll-call. Denise Day?
Yes.
Al Howland?
Yes.
Dan Klein?
Yes.
Brian Sisneros?
Yes.
Michael Williams?
Yes.
Tom Newkirk? Yes. The agenda's approved. Dr. Morris, you said there were no public comments. Am I correct on that?
Correct. We just received dozens of emails that we've forwarded to the school board, but nobody asked me to read it as public comment.
Okay. Could I have a motion to approve the July 14th, 2020, and the July 30th, 2020 workshop meeting minutes? We can move those as a group, or we can do... Denise?
I'll make that motion.
To approve both?
To approve both.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Al. Are there any changes?
Yep.
Denise?
I have one small change. I should go over this here so I can... And this is for the July 30th. I mean, yeah, July 30th, if I can open it. My computer's being difficult. It's at the very end. Hang on one second. Okay. It's not... All right. So, I'm sorry about that. I should have written it down. It was just when Michael Williams made the comment that we might be remote for the whole year. I had noted that the best opportunity to be in person was at the beginning of the year. So that would be on page six, about like five sentences down. Oh, that's... He's talking about UNH. That's not the right one. About halfway down the page.
Okay. Are there other changes? Hearing none?
I would like to actually just... I don't think that's what I said. I don't think in that paragraph next to the one Denise was just saying, Michael Williams stated he would choose fully remote based on the evidence. I believe what I said was, I thought that if we started remote, we would end up being remote for the whole year.
Yeah.
I was not expressing my personal opinion, and I'd like to clarify that or just strike that paragraph completely.
Okay. That's my memory of what you said, yeah?
Yeah, I agree.
Are there other changes? Okay. Save a motion and a second. Denise Day?
Yes.
Al Howland?
Yes.
Dan Klein?
Yes.
Brian Sisneros?
Paul Stevie.
Tom Newkirk? Yes. So five yes, one abstention.
I'll say yes also.
I'm sorry. Michael Williams, sorry. So we move to announcements, commendations, and comments from the board. Denise?
I just want to thank everyone that took the time to write letters to us. We did receive dozens of letters, and certainly the perspectives ran the gamut. I appreciate all of the perspectives and everyone that took the time to do that.
I counted 90 letters in my file, and extraordinarily well-written, diplomatic, thoughtful, just, I think exemplary. So I really appreciate the, just the intensity and the care that was taken in those letters. Al?
So, just as a public service announcement, Monday, the Durham Town Council did pass an emergency mask ordinance. The ordinance would last 61 days. We have the flexibility... We like it that way because we, as we implemented the mask ordinance, we want to see if there are changes and how we enforce it, and so that we can come back and make changes to the ordinance itself. In a nutshell, it really covers four zones of Durham, which is the Central Business District, Churchill, the courthouse zoning, and I'm missing one, the faculty office, which is really the downtown area. So if you go into any store now, you'll have to wear a mask, or if you're queuing up to go to, say, like Scorp's, you gotta wear a mask. If you go in to eat while you're at your table, you can take your mask off, but if you get up to go to the bathroom or anywhere else, you have to put your mask back on. The police department right now is passing out signs, so you'll probably see them in all the businesses now, "Please wear a mask." The hope is that we have a consistent policy on UNH's private property, they're requiring students to wear a mask. That also, that allows Durham to say, "Please wear a mask," and the hope would be in the school district that when people are on school district property, they will wear masks. So it's a consistent policy throughout the community. And the police, really, the idea has always been with our police force to be educational in nature, so when they go up to students, particularly, I think that's where our problem area is going to be, that we say, "Would you please wear a mask? Here's a mask, actually, from Durham PD. Put this on." It's really an educational element. There is a fine attached to repeat offenders. If we keep coming up to you and you're not really willing to work with us, the first crack is $100 fine, and then it goes up to $200, then $500. So, anyway, the hope is that for us to be successful, everybody is going to have to really follow social distancing and mask requirements, or it won't work. So, anyway, that's my public service.
I talked about construction, and we're going to schedule the next walkthrough of the middle school site on August 28th, Friday, so I'll be sending out information on that. At that point, the steel will have arrived. I think the steel comes...
Just 17, 30.
17, so there'll be the start of the vertical construction of the steel, which I think will really be exciting. So if you have your hard hat, bring it. We'll have some hard hats there, so I'll be in touch on that. Other things from the board? Assistant Superintendent? Nope. Dr. Morris?
Thank you, Tom. Several things. One, I do want to echo Denise's appreciation for all the emails we received, and texts, and phone calls, and echo Tom's comment that they were incredibly powerful statements of people's positions and well-worded. I also want to thank the administrative team and the dozens of teachers who worked tirelessly from before the end of the school year until tonight. Their work is represented in the various options that are being presented tonight, and I really could not have been here and provided you the information you needed without all of them, so I want to thank them as well. The board asked me during a workshop if I would reach out to UNH. I did do that. They... Chris Clement, in particular, the Vice President of Operations, who is in charge of the testing work that's going on at the university. My first question was, would they be willing to test all of our faculty and staff? The answer was yes. It's costing about $120 per person, so that would be about $51,000. And then I had a conversation with board leadership on that, and they asked me to reach out once again to see if the university would be willing to test our adult faculty and staff, should we have a concern. And Chris Clement was... He said to share with you as a board that absolutely the university would be willing to do that. I think that's a wiser move. It's a more cost-effective move, and it would work similar to, say, a doctor's order. If an adult faculty member, staff member was concerned, or a nurse was concerned, they would refer them to the university. The advantage of that is the 48-hour turnaround. So right now, Convenient MD is doing all of their testing, trying to get through all their faculty and their first barrage of students. But what Chris shared with me is eventually the university wants to be... Activate their lab and do the work themselves. So they're at a transition point. But I just really want to say how much I appreciate how willing... No hesitation whatsoever by the university in their willingness to help us. So I want to thank them this evening. The other thing that I wanted to talk about, we get several emails around sports, parents that are concerned about sports, of course, and students are. And the New Hampshire Interscholastic Athletic Association has pushed off the fall season until September 8th. I would add that to the agenda for the next meeting, assuming that Tom and Michael are willing, so that Andy can bring us up to speed. But just what's going on around our region, lots and lots of conversation about modifying the fall sports season. Some schools are talking about eliminating the fall sports season. In our conversations internally, we haven't gone that far, and so I just think it's important that Andy bring us up to speed at the next meeting to give you all a sense of what our thinking is as of two weeks from now.
Jim, what kind of decision would the NHIA do? Would it say all sports are on? Would it say it's up to you?
They are, right now, saying it's up to each school district. And so, you know, say that, you know, we decided to have golf, as an example, it's a non-contact sport, it seems like it would be a pretty safe thing to do. You're outdoors, you're not on top of each other kind of thing. But if other school systems cancel their golf teams, we have nobody to play. So the issue that we've been talking about, Suzanne and Andy and Todd and I, was really revolved around making sure that our kids had options. Even if we can't do interscholastic activities, then how do we keep our kids active? Because I think that was one of the things we learned from the spring, you know, when we talk about the end of the school year, and we talk about the loss of, you know, the sports season. When you look back at that, you know, at that point in time, that probably was the right decision, but going into a planning process, I think we can think more intelligently about options for kids and not just, you know, cut it off completely, any more than we would cut off the academic program completely. So we want to have that conversation with the board and get a sense of where your collective thoughts are related to some of our thoughts, and then that will help the community know what we're thinking in terms of fall activities. So the other thing that I just wanted to make sure you saw, and again, I was able to share it with board leadership, and we thought it would be important for you all to see tonight, is the efforts that have been put together around PPE needs and health and safety needs. So the reason that, besides the fact that the focus here is how do we keep our children safe, how do we keep our staff safe, we also have to be thoughtful about what we're purchasing. So initially, what we did as an administrative team is, you know, Jim Rizicky became our focal point, because generally he has the contacts in relation to getting materials and supplies. And so everybody just kind of, you know, threw things at Jim, and he collected a spreadsheet. We reviewed that spreadsheet last week, and we really just kind of went down through and were much more surgical. So the first time through, it's, "What do you think you need?" The second time through is, "This is what we need." And so the cost went from $167,000, something like that, down to $130,000. So why is this important for me to share with you? We're in a budget for PPE. So in an environment like this, this is not a... This is not like, "Can we do it or can't we do it?" We have to do it. So in that regard, I have to find a way of covering these costs within the budget that was approved by the voters, because there's no magic pot for me to reach into and say, "Oh, here's $130,000." So I had this conversation conceptually with the finance committee, so... But they hadn't seen it at this specific level yet. So as a result of the incredibly good, great interest rate we got on the bond, it did free up about $250,000. So, you know, so what I would, you know, spend this from would be from the savings on the bond, which really is unfortunate, because we were trying to be incredibly frugal as we go through this school year, and we're still trying to be incredibly frugal. But I don't have a choice on this. We have to make sure that we have the equipment on hand to protect our nurses, our teachers, our students. There was an item that came through from Lisa, very thoughtful item, you know, "Could we get foggers for the bus?" Buses, you know, they're these machines that you spray a fog through the bus, and it kills, you know, germs. But as an electronic option, it's, you know, nearly $25,000. And, you know, I looked at that and said, "Well, that's, you know, that's really all well and good, but, you know, it would clean crevices and cracks in buses and so..." But these aren't places that kids put their hands. They put their hands on their seats, and, well, if the bus is full on each other, but the buses in this case would not be full. The way that we're envisioning the buses now is we would have only one child in each row by the windows, windows down, so air is circulating, masks on. I think that, you know, the disinfectant spray that Jim is buying for the classroom would be perfectly fine in this regard. So, you know, I'm looking at that and saying, "Is that a need, or is that a want?" I really think it's a want more than a need, because we can take care of our bus seats the same way we take care of our seats in the classroom and our desks in the classroom. It doesn't require, you know, 24 machines that could break down and then have to be replaced. So that's a place where I think we could reduce our costs, but that's... I just wanted the board to know, you know, there's a lot of money sitting here on the table, and, you know, for me to be spending this kind of money, I just wanted to make sure you guys knew in advance, and then how I was covering the cost. So that's really my last report. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Did you want to mention the anti-racism, or...
Oh, yes, thank you. I wrote that down. Our first organizational meeting of the Anti-Racism Committee is next Tuesday night. I finally was able to pull that from the back burner to the front burner, sent out the invitations to a small group, and I don't want anybody to misinterpret that. It's just, let's get a small group together and organize ourselves, figure out how we expand, you know, logically into the community, because this is a high-interest area of the community. And as I was saying, Suzanne, just before I started the meeting, I don't know how to get my head around 200 Zoom, you know, people, but I know how to get my head around, you know, a dozen on a Zoom call, and then we can figure out from there how we expand participation. So for anybody listening, please know that I'm not trying to limit participation, I'm just trying to get it off the ground. Good people, all, they'll work hard to get it organized with me, and then we'll follow up. So that's... I just needed to get it going. It's been right there at my fingertips every week, and I just had to move it, you know, and so I just, I thought, "Let's put together a group, let's get going, and start working on it." Thank you, Tom.
Okay. Business administrator?
So I have a couple of things for you this evening. End of the year, budget update. $962,000. And with revenues, we're at about $1.1 million. So we will meet our obligation to the towns and have money to fund the emergency fund.
Okay.
Questions?
My question is, Kim, how much of that can we put into the emergency fund?
I'm going to actually contact DRA. Usually at tax rate setting, they'll give us that number. Today I was working with the auditors, and he said the maximum is around $930, based on his calculations. We have $350,000, so the difference we can put in there. But I'm going to confirm that with DRA, and I'll come back to you with that number before we set the tax rate, to get your official vote on it. Any other questions?
So is that the year is now closed?
It's closed, yes. We're just doing a few adjustments. The auditors spent three days, they're finishing up, and because there'll be a few more back and forth, but yeah, all good. Okay. The other thing I have, I sent you the final bond numbers, and that number is $267,521. That's the difference between the $625 and the actual payment. So that's the monies we have available.
And that's the money I just identified?
Yes, correct.
Denise? Good, Denise?
So then we're going to have savings every year.
Sometimes, if you look at that schedule, you'll notice that the average is 1.97, but there are other years that it's higher. So the investors took a higher rate at the beginning, so sometimes that will be a little higher or the same. So, yeah. But it won't be every year. I'll work out a schedule for that. When we get the budget set, so you'll see that. We good? The last thing I need is, of course, you approved the bus purchasing, but the leasing company needs an official motion by you to approve the lease, and it's at, it's a five-year, 3.49% financing.
So, Denise?
I make a motion to approve the bus lease as presented.
Moved by Denise, or second?
Actually, excuse me, it has to be to approve the master installment purchasing agreement. Did you... Do you have that document? Sorry.
Why didn't you read it?
Sure. To approve entering into a master installment purchasing agreement with Mercedes-Benz Financial Services USA LLC for the purpose of purchasing via a finance contract the equipment listed on the attachment, which is two buses.
So does Denise have to say that, or can we say that that's...
Go move.
Okay. Second? Brian? Any discussion? Denise Day?
Yes.
Al Howland?
Yes.
Dan Klein?
Yes.
Brian Sisneros?
Yes.
Michael Williams?
Yes.
Tom Newkirk? Yes. So six yeses, six zero?
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Finance committee update. Mr. Howland?
So the finance committee met, and I'm losing track, I think it was at last week? I can't even remember anymore. It was unusual, because in all of my time on the school board and actually on the Durham Town Council, it's the first time I ever sat down with all three, representatives from all three of the communities in the cooperative and the school district. We started out, Jim talked a little bit about the workshops and the planning of the reopening of the schools. From there, he talked about some of the cost considerations that, as he handed out the sheet, he talked about. And then from there, we moved on, really talking about how the towns were doing, and as a whole, the towns are doing fairly well. The tax collections are very close to where they were last year at this time. In addition, each of the three towns have healthy fund balances that'll allow them to weather the storm, we think. The concern that they expressed really was the December tax that came in, and just, you know, the fallback really is, anybody who has a mortgage, your mortgage company is going to pay the taxes on it, so that's about 60... In Durham, that's about 60% of the homes. So again, we're cautiously optimistic. We ended up, the last part I thought was really interesting, which is, what I've always harped on, is where are areas that we could collaborate together? We started out talking about the REACH program, and I just talked to Rachel today about it. The idea is, can we expand it? There are some holes, particularly at the elementary level. We'd love to do more after the morning session for the schools, but the limiting factor really is staff. We don't have the staffing, and so the question would be, could we get funds from Lee and Madbury to increase staffing, and then we could increase the program, which I think would be really beneficial? From there, we moved on, believe it or not, to trash and the idea of, is, could we work off of the landright cooperative contract with base management that Lee has, which we're investigating, which would save Durham, particularly out of money, and probably Madbury. We also talked about composting. Is there a communal way we could collect composting? And from there, we talked about some interesting ones, healthcare and energy. Is there ways that we can collaborate and work with energy? So I think that's a really good start, and when we have our next meeting, it'll be an area that we continue to work on. So a good meeting.
Good.
I have a question.
Denise?
So I was confused in the minutes when it talked about that Dean brought up being able to use the bond under the projected percent. Could we use the additional funds to alleviate our cash flow problem? But then I just heard you say that we can use money to offset other costs, so I just needed an explanation of what that was referring to.
Dean had a misunderstanding related to the bond. He thought, one, that we had it all at our hands, and that we could create savings in the construction costs to offset operating costs if the towns weren't able to make their payments. I explained to Dean that the bond money was raised specifically for the building. So the money that I just talked about is the... From the first payment, so we had estimated what the first payment was based on the information that Sue had at the time, and it's far less. So that meant that that money could be used elsewhere, so that's why I usually get for PPE.
Okay. But it's, I get it, so it's not, we're not using the bond money, we're just using interest savings, basically. Got it? Okay.
The other concern really, too, is like, if there was a cash flow problem, the payment of the school district to the town, you know, if their collection of money was transferring, would the town have to borrow money? And it doesn't look like that. Look, I mean, again, I think the good news is that everybody's in pretty healthy financial condition right now, so I don't think there'll be a problem.
Yeah, so it kind of went from, you know, a conversation that started about, "What can you do?", and it really ended on, "What can we do together?"
Yeah.
It really was a transformative conversation, and I have to agree with Al. I actually said it was the best meeting I've ever attended of multi-municipal bodies sitting down, and it was really about problem solving in the end, where it started out, you know, with everybody speaking towards their own unique interests, it ended up with, "How do we work together?" So that's pretty amazing.
Other questions? Thank you, Jim. So now we move to the... So now we move to the major work of the evening, which is to make decisions about opening school. That's the kind of decision I don't think any of us ever anticipated we would have to make, and it's a decision where I think any decision we make will disappoint some. And I want to, like, talk about the process first, because it's a complicated process of decision-making we're going to have to go through. And my wife suggested that I consult Robert's Rules of Order, which I did. And Robert's Rules suggests something called repeated voting, where you, where you have multiple votes, eliminating the least, the ones with the least. So here's the process that I think we should go through. One, administrators will describe for the board the options for opening, beginning with high school, moving to elementary, and then middle school. The logic being, get the two ends, and then that would kind of help determine the middle. So that was the logic for that order. After each presentation, the board has an opportunity to discuss and ask that option and ask questions. So there'll be, there'll be presentation on the high school, deliberation on the high school, then we'll move to the vote on those high school options using repeated voting, and it'll work like this. When the deliberation is done, the board will use repeated voting recommended by Robert's Rules of Order. All options will be on the table on the first vote, and each member will vote for one. If any opinion, option gets the majority, it is the board's choice, it'd need four votes. So if any option gets four votes, it has the majority of the vote. If no option gets a majority, all options get no votes, and the one with the lowest number of votes are eliminated. So you eliminate all that have no votes and the lowest option, then you repeat the vote, and you repeat until you get a majority vote. So you're not, it's quite possible, if there's a consensus, you might get that majority vote in the first vote. But, but if you don't, you proceed by knocking off the least popular options until you get there. So what I'm recommending is that all the deliberation happens before the vote, and once the vote happens, it proceeds progressively without discussion between votes. And we can adjust that, but I think, you know, let's have the discussion before that and proceed methodically, yeah?
So I think that's great. The only, as I was doing it, I kind of put it in order that I thought was going to be the most difficult, and so when I did it, I didn't start with the high school. In my mind, the most difficult authority area is going to be elementary school, and I, I prefer to, and you can vote me against or not doing it, but I think starting with the elementary and then building out is the way, is, is, does tackle the toughest one, and the repercussions of the elementary may impact the middle and the high school, but that's just my sense.
How about the rest, yeah?
So, oh, so what you described makes sense.
Sorry.
It's just, given there's certain interconnectedness, obviously, between the schools, and should we come to a conclusion in a later discussion that we've already voted on in an earlier vote, what leeway do we have to?
You could move to reconsider.
Okay.
If, if you thought that, that, you know, enough the board, you know, it could be a motion to reconsider if you thought there was this, it was disjunctive, and then if the majority thought, yeah, then they can move to reconsider, and that'll be a majority vote.
Okay.
Denise?
I have some general questions that really apply to all levels, so I don't know if I should, like, ask those before we start with each one, because they're just general. Like, my first question is, if we were to move to remote, what does that mean for our bus drivers, for example? And that's any, at any level, you know what I mean? It's just, what would that mean?
Well, historically, what we, what we did with the drivers last year is, they became, and of course, we had a major grant to support this, they became food delivery vehicles, and they became material delivery vehicles. So if we were completely remote, I would initially find out how many drivers were willing to work in other divisions, because we wouldn't need all of the buses to transport food or children. Although, you know, we'll need a good number of them, because if you only can get one, one child on each side of the bus by the windows, that's 26 kids. And one of the things that I had said to Michael and Tom was, the buses are going to look completely inefficient to the community, because we often get complaints the buses are running empty, but in this model, regardless of what one, which one we choose, the buses we use will have 26 kids on the maximum, and so because of that, we'll probably still need a number of drivers. So whatever plan we come up with, we'll figure out. I think a completely remote with no targeted learners would be a stretch for us to keep all the drivers. The minute you hit targeted learners, we'll need everybody that we need, because the 26 kids on the bus is lots of, lots of bus routes, you know, over and over again, because we normally would have twice that, three times, not, not quite three times, but two and a half times that on a bus.
And then I actually have two more questions. Again, I'm just trying to understand the implications of, of remote at any level. What would happen to meals? In, I know we used a grant last spring, which we no longer have, so my question is, if we were remote, whether it was the high school, the middle, the elementary, all, would that mean we're not feeding our kids? Like, what would that mean?
So we have an obligation under federal law to pay, provide meals for the children who are free or reduced because they live in a poverty level, and so some of the model, they would get fed. Some of the models offer different opportunities. If we, for example, just use the AMPM model at the, at the middle school, we would make sure that we had brown bag lunches for every child who qualified at the end of the first session and who qualified at the end of the second session, because we have to be very concerned about families that are, you know, absolutely struggling to put food on the table. So, you know, that's, that's one of the models we've thought about, but in every case, we would make sure those, those children were fed, whether they're fed here or whether they, a brown bag depends on the model that the board chooses.
Okay.
But we have thought through that, Denise.
And then my last question is, again, if we go, well, actually, it's actually any plan, but if we lose families either to homeschooling, I believe we, we lose them, they're not part of our census, what if they go to V-Lax? Are they still part of our census, or do we lose them if they go to V-Lax?
If they unenroll and go to V-Lax, we lose them. If they are participating in any of the models you choose, and they choose a V-Lax course, they're in, they count.
Okay.
So, for example, I got an email this week from a parent who indicated that she wanted to homeschool, and said, yep, so this is what happens, and I gave her, it's a very simple process. All I legally have to do is inform the commissioner. Generally, they inform us, and then they inform the commissioner, and then we both know. Often, if they just tell the commissioner, we don't know that who's homeschooling, and the state isn't really great about informing us. So parents generally tell us, and then I tell them, send the same note to the commissioner, and, you know, everybody knows who's being homeschooled. But I asked this particular parent, you know, if we have a remote option, would she still homeschool, or would she participate in the remote? And she said she would actually continue to homeschool. She has a primary age child, and so for her, it was something that she could do. So I think the, the issue is, anybody who's thinking about homeschooling, if we have a remote option, does that work better for your family? Can we provide that? If we can provide it, then we get to keep the count. Just as a, you know, aside, it's really about, you know, our commitment to children, it's really not about the state subsidy, because as a district, we get $3,700 per student, and it represents probably about 10% of our budget. It's unlikely that, you know, all of, all of the people, all the children and families would go to homeschool, so we, we have a baseline. General speaking, we have about three dozen people who homeschool, so once the school year starts and we have the options available to us, you can, we can go back to that baseline and, and then be able to inform the board. We had 60 people who homeschooled instead of 36, so, you know, it's, to me, the whole process that we spent this summer doing is to try to get as many of our families engaged with us. V-Lax is, is an option, but it's also an option inside the system, it doesn't have to be outside the system.
Okay, I lied, I actually, one last. If we lose Barrington students, though, that would be a significant, like, if we choose an option for the high school that they don't like, they could potentially go to either Co-Brown or Dover?
They could. Dover, I mean, Dover's already made their decision, and so their decision, depending on what we choose tonight, is known. Co-Brown is, is in, the question is how long they would be in. Nothing stops a parent from enrolling at St. Thomas or Warwick Academy or other options. So those options all exist for some of our families, so.
Okay, thank you.
Would lose them if they do that.
Thank you.
Okay, I want to go to Al's, Brian?
Quite, as I watched the last two meetings, and I'm not going to assume what everyone's going to decide, but I'm, I'm pretty sure that the, having a full return in all three schools is probably not an option, or a popular one. But one thing I didn't hear in the two meetings from anybody is, what is the threshold of us fully returning? What is that level that we have to hit in order to say, okay, everybody's back? Because I've never heard that discussed anywhere, and is that, you know, what measurement are we going to use to do that? I mean, it's kind of like, that's the, otherwise, if we don't set something, then we could be, we could be hybrid forever.
So if we go to the CDC recommendations in March as opposed to the most recent ones, and the reason I say that is because in March, nobody was playing political games with the various reports. That baseline would be zero cases for at least two straight weeks, if we're going to use a, you know, a metric that was hard, and prob, the only community of the three that meet that metric right now is Madbury.
So all three towns would have to have zero two weeks?
Well, I mean, we do have, I mean, part of what we're talking about tonight is, and this, I thank you, Brian, I'm glad you asked this, why we have the levels the way we do is a direct result of the feedback we got from parents and teachers last spring, where they were concerned that we were treating the elementary school the same way we treated a high school, and that we approached it as a system, but we also approached it from the developmental level of the students. So, you know, Madbury having zero, and Lee, I think, is at one to four as of today, we felt we could treat the two elementary schools, potentially, depends on what you guys say, differently than we do the middle school and the high school, because the middle school and high school sit in Durham, and last week it was nine, but is it still nine? What is it?
Durham is one to four.
So Durham has gone down one to four.
Durham is one to four.
Yeah, so.
Barrington is one to four right now as well.
And what's the, what's, on the flip side, what's the, are we going to have a threshold for, and I may have missed this, but is there a threshold for shutting everything back down and going fully remote if we decide a hybrid option?
So, so there's two thresholds, actually. One would be the governor shuts us down, the other threshold would, our parents will shut us down. So if we end up with active cases in our schools, in our elementary schools, middle school or high school, and we're in, then based on the reactions that we saw last spring, despite all our best efforts on protecting children and staff, the parents could just simply say, I'm moving to the remote model now because I'm too uncomfortable.
And the other, I guess, like Denise, I'm adding questions on here, but what about the parent who says, I'm going remote, and then their schedule doesn't allow them to do it, they're going to send the kid in, and then it'll be back out the next week? Are we going to have a system where, or like a, maybe a contract or something that says, hey, you have to choose one or the other for the time being?
So at the last meeting, Brian, I talked about the fact that we're going to ask the parents to re-register all, all of their childrens. Normally, we just have new, new children in incoming kindergarten, but we want to add a couple of questions to the registration process so we can plan. One is, are you going to use our buses? So we know exactly how many families are planning on using the bus. The other one is, depending on tonight, whatever the board's decisions are, are you going to keep your children remote, or are you going to participate in the model, whatever model the board tells us tonight? Then, what I would ask the board is that once a parent has given us the decision, it can't be an evolving decision, because I have to establish a staffing pattern to support the decisions of the board tonight. So when a parent makes a decision, what I would recommend is, and that's one I'm going to recommend to the board, also in terms of the model, is that we, that's up for review every quarter. So, you know, a parent makes a decision, it's good for a quarter, the board makes a decision, it's good for a quarter. About a month before the quarter's over, we bring the model back to the board, and we give a report, and then the board can say, I'm comfortable to move forward in a different model, or this model is stable, and this is where we want to be, so the board can, can change the pattern once, once a quarter, and I would want the parents to be able to have that same flexibility once a quarter.
How would the parent, how would it be made clear to the parents, though, that it's a, it's a either or for a quarter?
We'll communicate that with them, you know, just like we have been communicating all summer. Todd and I actually started to communicate, a draft of the communication based on tonight's decision, so we can get it out tomorrow, because parents are, you know, really anxious about what the decision the board, board will have. So there'll be a, a mini superintendent's newsletter that goes out tomorrow with the decisions of the board tonight. And then, as you can imagine, whatever decision the board makes tonight involves still a lot more detail work, because we've been giving you broad models. Once you make a decision, then we have to collapse and actually put the detail behind that model, and that will help parents understand their choices and options.
So I think we need to move forward to, now, Al suggested that we start with the elementary.
Well, the reason I say it is because, and I'm not meaning to minimize the difficulty of doing the high school with 800 students, but high schoolers are the most mature and the most capable of using technology, and I think likely have the smallest number of targeted students, when you talk about targets, learners. I think the elementary students are the most complex. It's really, really difficult. And I started, I went back and I researched, like, you know, and you can misty, double if I'm right, but like, third graders are eight years old, and fourth graders on average are about nine years old. And so we're talking about really young kids with implications of online learning. I think it's the most complex of the three levels to work with. And I think by Tom's thing, we're doing orders and all that, I don't want to start with the high school, then go last to the elementary and have, or wherever we're doing elementary, make changes to it, then have it spill over and say, wait a second, the high school one doesn't work anymore. So let's start with a really hard one, that may have ramifications that spill over to the other levels, clear that off the table, and then work our way out. I just think it's a, it makes more sense to me, but that's just me.
Would you be, well, I'd like to propose that we just flip those, I'd still like to have the high school before the middle school.
Finally, me.
Okay. Is that, is that agreeable?
Yeah.
Okay, then I guess people have to flip ahead in the PowerPoint, so the people, the elementary school principals are presenting the K4 models? That's fine, Al.
I mean, I just, I just.
Yeah, sure, sure, sure.
No, it makes sense.
Yep.
Good evening. Mr. Goldsmith was not able to be here tonight, so I'll be speaking on the behalf of all K4 in the district. We did work together to create these models, and I have some great notes here, so I'll do my best to represent both Masway and Moherman. So we have five models that are in front of you. They really are progressive from what I would consider the most at-risk model down to the risk-free model, and we will go in that order. Mrs. Ford would just like me to note that whatever the board considers for kindergarten, to please also consider that for pre-K as we're going through these models. Okay, so the first model, elementary, we tried to number them in order to match the cover sheet that you have for the five models. This is fully in-person, kindergarten through fourth grade. We would need to split our groups, where you would have half of your class for part of the day. of the day and the other half of your class would be somewhere else on campus, however. So the children would be in school for the full day, but in order to socially distance, we would still need to split the groups somewhere on campus. So this can be very challenging in the sense that we don't have, for example, Masway has 19 classrooms, so to cut that in half, I would need to find that many more additional spaces. And there's only so much room, cafeterias, gyms, libraries, and such. So that would be a challenge. Staff would also be very challenging to cut all the students in half and have them on campus all day. And then naturally, this would be the most, the highest risk would be to fill the building with all of our children and all of our staff. Would you like to ask questions as we go?
Well.
Keep plugging?
Keep plugging, and then people, if they have questions, we stop.
I'll try to look up.
Yep.
This is a slide that we've seen at the other workshop that we've had together, so this is not new information. I just want to highlight that, as you know, this is a very difficult decision, and there are challenges for both hybrid and remote. The exposure to students and staff is higher in a hybrid model. We do worry about what happens if you have to quarantine a student or a family or a staff member? Would we have enough substitutes? Childcare for families that have two working parents? There are many challenges to consider if we're looking at a hybrid model. Remote challenges, as we all know, everyone's passionate to get as many of our students back in the building as we can due to the inequity, the inequities that just exist in homes, whether that's with technology or adult support as needed, especially for our youngest learners. So some examples there are supporting food security, socialization, mental health is very important. So there are challenges that come with remote also. And I've heard from a lot of parents, there's a lot of worry about two parents that are both working and how we're going to tackle if their children are not in school full day. So, our second model has less of a risk than our original model. This would be students learning for half a day in person and then going home the other half of the day, so they would be off-campus rather than in those additional spaces that we were discussing. Again, I want to note, early on, we did talk with the board about a two-day model, having students in, say, Monday, Tuesday, cleaning on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. I've had some parents reach out to me just to clarify, why did that model go away? And I just wanted to say in public that the reason that that sort of went away was we were hopeful that getting our children in four days a week, even if it was only half a day, was going to keep that instructional momentum going, was going to support whatever you learned in the morning, in class, would have carryover to what you would do at home that afternoon. So we were just really passionate about getting our students in as much as we could, which is why we landed on this AMPM option where the remote part of the day would be at home for K4. All of these models, I'm not reading every bullet, but as you know, it's six feet, social distancing, wearing masks, things of that nature. That would be included in any in-person model that we have. This model's a little different than what we've talked about in the past. This model is talking about a hybrid model that would bring our kindergarten through second grade into the building, half in the morning, the other half in the afternoon, and keeping third and fourth grade remote. I appreciate what Al said a moment ago, and I have a little bit of mixed feelings about it, to be honest. I was so impressed with our third and fourth graders and their ability to really be engaged in the remote learning that we did in the spring. It was really quite remarkable. At the same time, they are our babies. I mean, they're, they're our youngest learners, and I think if we keep our kindergarten through second grade, those are our children that are the least independent outside of the classroom. Those are our children that I just worry about those foundational academic skills that need to be taught, reading, math, that really requires direct instruction from an adult. Not that that's not important for third and fourth grade, but just as a continuum of the models for the board to consider. This one was a little bit different in that way, of bringing in half of our students K2 and then the other half and keeping three, four remote. Now, you will notice it does say targeted, because if there are third and fourth graders who are more at risk, we would love an opportunity to bring them in, in a, you know, in a safe systematic way in order to meet their needs.
So I have a puzzler question for you.
Okay.
So if you brought in like K through two into, say, Moheramet and Masway, what, what is, what are those numbers? What is that? How many kids are there coming into the building?
Hundred and sixty.
Thank you, I have my enrollment list. Our numbers are pretty, are pretty comparable, K through two. We're both under 20 for the most part for kindergarten and first grade. Second grade, I think our numbers vary, but, thank you, Dr. Morris.
About.
Okay.
Is that, that number, though, is full enrollment? That's not?
Correct.
So it'd be half of those children in the building at a time. Thank you, Brian.
Okay. Why is it say four days a week?
All of our models initially, Michael, we were thinking were four days a week to allow a day for staff to be able to have all the required meetings that we'll need to have, whether that's data team meetings, IEP meetings, 504 meetings, just due to the challenge of meeting contractual obligations and all of the teaching time that would be in these, that fifth day would be for those reasons. I too heard from a parent today who was asking why not five days a week? And that's certainly to the periphery of the, of the board, and we'll support that the best we can with whatever decision you land on, but the reasoning was to allow a day for meetings.
So are you assuming that the, the previous model, elementary two, is also four days a week? Because it doesn't say that.
Yes.
It does.
The assumption of what we've been talking about all along was four days a week for every model and staying remote, one day for some deep cleaning as well as meetings for teachers. Yes.
So we essentially then are cutting down from a five-day schedule to four. How does that work in terms of the hours for meeting the requirement, the state requirement?
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to make sure that I'm very clear that that fifth day would be a school day for students. It would, we would just be assigning things where they would be a little bit more independent on those days. We would probably still have some office hours available for teachers and things like that, but it wouldn't be the direct instruction that we would be providing.
I mean, one of the comments I heard, it was in a parent letter, it's what I saw, and it's not elementary, it was in high school.
Yes.
But it has to do across all the levels where it talked about the relearning day. Like, if you're not having any trouble, a relearning day was a day off. And then we did in May, we took the April vacation and split it up. We had Monday off and then a relearning day, and it blew the whole schedule apart. And we lost, we lost continuity. So my concern is that what structure is there on that fifth day to keep people engaged so it's not a day off?
I'll just answer one part, and then certainly Misty can jump in with the instructional component. As far as the state is concerned, the relearning days or remote days count as six hours, and we operate on the hours calculation. So our requirement at the elementary level is 945 instructional hours. So regardless of the model that we're following, we're assuming it's a six-hour instructional day, whether it's three hours in-person and three hours at home, but that's, that's how the state has asked us to calculate it if we're in the remote model. I would say, you know, your comment about how things played out in the spring, I think there was something lost in the shuffle when we instituted the relearning day and then on top of that took the one, so we were really reducing the, the instructional days to three. And I think the concept of the relearning day was kind of lost in the shuffle, partly because I think we were very new to it, and I think our teachers were not as necessarily adept at how do you utilize a day of relearning in that model? And I think one of the things we know we need to work on and will, will definitely be better at is how do we make sure that those remote days are purposeful for kids and, and also providing some kind of a structured, synchronized plan for what kids are supposed to do on those days? But you're absolutely right, some kids will have a lot more, may have more relearning tasks to deal with than others. For some kids, it might be enrichment type of activity that they do, but we would be definitely looking to make sure kids are engaged on those days.
And with those relearning days, the other benefit of having, if you're in an AMPM session and you have a relearning day, you are coming back to your classroom. So the teacher is checking back in, in-person to make sure what was assigned and what was expected to be done on that day was completed. And if they haven't, they can build in support for that. The other thing to just again, strongly advocate for is that if our teachers are truly teaching an AMPM model, there really is not time for required meetings through IDEA, for IEP meetings and for Section 504, because if I start, if we have kids come in for a two-and-a-half hour, three-hour block, and I start calling teachers for all these meetings, those kids who are coming in do not get their teacher time. So having those relearning days to really have teachers be participating in these meetings where their attendance is required would allow them to be present for the students when the students are there and to conduct meetings when the students are doing relearning.
Misty, you addressed it early on, but I think it might be worth discussing in greater details. At some point early on in the, in the planning phase, we moved away from the alternating full days. And I think I've heard some of the same concerns that you've heard. And one person helped me to sort of clarify my thinking on it, reminding me of what it was like to have half-day kindergarten.
Yes.
And the point was that, you know, the half-day model is, is lacking in the sense that by the time you sort of get settled in, you're kind of moving on to the transitional period of the day when the next group is coming, so you've got to wrap things up. The fear and the concern, and frankly, one of my concerns too, is if we're building in with a half-day model, additional transitional periods, it feels to me as though we're building in more exposure. So with, with, with transition comes the sort of mingling of the cohorts, there's transportation, frequency increased. So if, if we could just talk more about maybe whether that's worth reconsidering or maybe some additional information as to why we moved away from it, given that that sort of exposure frequency increases with the half-day model?
Yes, so for the two-day a week, again, it was really to be able to have face time and direct instruction with our children four times a week rather than two. It just kept that instructional momentum going, more in-class time with our teachers, especially for our youngest learners, and a more robust carryover. So if you received direct instruction in the morning from your classroom teacher and then you went home to practice what those skills that you learned directly were in the afternoon or whatever time of the day you're scheduled, that four times a week opposed to two times. I hear the concern, that's come to me as well, regarding the fact that more transition could, could mean more transmission, if you will, with, with the virus. But again, we would be, regardless of what model, doing our best with the six feet apart, the required mask as much as the younger children are able, and things of that nature.
I think the one thing you didn't miss, mention, Misty, in terms of the AMPM model is, for the elementary level, it eliminates technology as a heavy component of the teaching. If you go to a two-day model, technology becomes an important feature of the remote days. In an AMPM model, it doesn't, because you've had the contact time with your teacher, so you can reduce screen time.
And, and just for context, I bring it up without clarity on necessarily which model is better, because I do see the advantages and disadvantages of each. So I just thought it was worth talking through.
Yes, and I think, I think you, you are correct, there's going to be advantages and disadvantages to all of these models. It's an impossible decision, so I appreciate you asking.
And Misty, question, kind of a follow-up on Dan. If you do the, the AMPM, that teacher that has the class in the morning, is she then the person that is teaching the remote class in the afternoon, or he or she teaching it in the afternoon, the same teacher?
Yes.
Yes, we haven't been able, we've been waiting on a board decision to really get into the nitty-gritty of staffing and what that will look like, but yes, that is the, that is the theory.
So they're, they're teaching half of their class, 10 kids of their class in the morning, and they're teaching the other 10 kids in the afternoon?
Well, my concern was if they were teaching a different class, then that adds an exposure issue too.
They would be with their class, and like Michael said, having half and half, depending on the time of the day.
But it's a separate, if you treat each half of the class as a cohort, it's a separate cohort.
Yeah.
Did I answer that okay? Is that what you, okay?
I feel like all the reasons that you don't want to do the full-day split are also reasons not to take a relearning day for elementary students.
Okay.
So I, I think that they, you know, it's either going to be technology-dependent, you're either going to have to be online doing some things, or it's going to be a lost day, where you lose continuity and you don't have much to do there. I can't really believe that elementary students are going to have the executive functioning skills to actually do self-directed relearning.
On the fifth day.
On the fifth day.
Michael, if I could say, you know, based on my conversations with union leadership, they would agree with you at the K through four level. I don't know if that's indicative of the, you know, broad teaching staff, but one of the pieces of feedback we did get in the spring was that relearning at the K through four level was, is not as important, wasn't as effective as it was at the high school level. But having said that, everything Catherine just said in terms of finding the time for those IEP meetings and 504 meetings and, and so forth, that's a real issue in any of these models.
Would it be possible to start out with, with a relearning day and then consider whether, how useful that is and maybe move to a four, you know, a full, you know, like, start with this model and see how, how it's working and then see, okay, we could move to that fifth day?
Yeah, I think that's one I was talking about earlier, Tom, is that the board should review the models quarterly, about a month before the quarter ends, and get feedback from the staff and community about how effective the model is going. And then when we hit, and in that, in that conversation, maintain the model or modify the model so that whatever we choose isn't locked and loaded for the entire school year, but we have predictable times in the year where we are touching base on the model, which I think logically would be quarterly.
Al?
So, I know this is semantics, but I would change in the elementary level, not call it a relearning day anymore. I think it, there's a separate issue, there's a separate issue for relearning. There's the, what Catherine's talking about, which is special needs students getting their services is one issue. And the second one is professional development, where we're trying to figure all this stuff out, because, oh, by the way, if anybody has sniffles, they're going online. So how can we be effective doing that? And the staff is gun, and this is all new territory for staff that's going to require an intensive amount of tweaking as we're going along. So how does Catherine's component and the professional development component fit into any of these schedules?
I appreciate you bringing back up the professional development. That's another thing I think I failed to mention with how that fifth day would be utilized, not only for IDEA and Section 504, but the ongoing learning that our teachers have been immersed in with utilizing technology and trying to make a very robust opportunity remotely for our children. I think we learned a lot in the spring. We are very eager to do better and to implement more and to make it more robust. Our task force have worked very hard reviewing the parent's survey data and really reflecting on that and talking about how to build upon our remote experience. But again, I thank you for bringing up the professional development, that's an additional piece in addition to the meetings that Catherine mentioned where that fifth day consideration came in. So just to sum up this third model, it's bringing in less students while targeting our most at-risk. I just honestly cannot fathom starting five-year-olds remotely. I, I've tried. I can't imagine it. If we do, we'll do our very best, they're just so little, and I just cannot, I can't, I can't. So bringing in the least amount of students that we can into the building, splitting those days in half for our K2, the children that are, you know, require the most support, need the most direct instruction for those foundational academic skills, and then targeting our grade three, four learners as needed, based on a variety of reasons that we can cover in another slide. cover in another slide. This is just an example of a schedule, I can't emphasize that enough. This was to give the board a visual of the work that the target of, the task force have been doing at Masway and Moheramont. We already have a meeting on the books for Monday. Based on the model that you endorsed this evening, we will get back to the nitty-gritty of what this will look like, so I just want to emphasize this is a example. But this would allow for approximately two and a half hours of instructional time in the morning or the afternoon, depending on the time that you're assigned to the building. Granted, a lot of things are going to go in, in play in that, in the sense of transportation, food services, if we have an abundance of parent drop-off versus students riding the bus, there's several things that could impact this, but this was just to give the board an example of how we were envisioning an A and B day model.
How does recess fit into this?
That's a great question. We've talked about recess happening in those small group cohorts, whether it's teachers or building pair educators taking our children out in small groups. We've talked a lot about outdoor learning to allow time to be outside for our kids. I have a PE teacher that is just dying to get outside. She's like, I'll stay out there all day long, send me kids as needed in small groups. So there's lots of different ideas for making sure that kids are getting time outside.
Denise?
So, and I, I just, there's no good decision with, it's just like, what's the least bad decision, seriously? It really is, because, you know, I sit here and every, every option is going to hurt somebody, that's the reality, it's going to hurt somebody. Any kind of remote, and it's going to hurt the working parents and the children that are at home that can't access the remote. If we do all-in, there's that risk of infection, and, you know, how many parents are going to just pull their kids out completely? So it's, it's just, it's just a mess, really. We just have to do the best we can. I will say again, I mentioned this at the last workshop, that I know it is possible to bring children in safely, because my program is doing it. We are now, tomorrow we'll make three full weeks that we've done it. It's going extremely well. The two key elements are small numbers, we have a maximum of eight children in a class. The other thing that this model does not address is there's very little sharing of materials. Our kids come on, we have a Monday, Tuesday group and a Wednesday, Thursday group, so very much that two-day-a-week model. And what happens is, we have little bins for everything. The kids have their own little bins for, you know, their, like, their markers and their scissors and all that stuff, but also for any kind of activities. And all of that gets sanitized at the end of the day, whatever, I mean, not the mark, like, that stays in their bin, but if they have, like, materials that are reused, those all get sanitized at the end of the day. With this kind of a half-day model, with only an hour in between their justice, I can tell you it's time-consuming. I've seen the teachers doing it, and it's, it's time-consuming. It works, you know, we've gone three weeks and we've been great, and our attendance has been the best ever, and the kids have been happy and engaged, and it's just been amazing. But I do really have a concern about the, the half-day and how that can work, again, to minimize the chances of infection. So I guess that's kind of where I'm at. I absolutely agree with you, you know, the kids that we have in right now are going to be kindergartners in a month, so I know that you can bring those kids and, and bring them in safely, but I'm just not sure if this model would be the one to be able to make that work.
I do want to acknowledge Denise, and thank you for everything you just shared, I appreciate that. We have talked a lot about some things that are more detailed that we haven't really gotten into with the board workshops, and an example of that would be individualized learning kits. So we have ordered pencil boxes, for the lack of a better word, so that every child will have their basic supplies and their own individualized kit and in their own individualized space. We've talked a lot about not using shared cubbies, not hanging coats, you know, there, it's just going to be a completely different experience than any of us have, have had with our children in the sense of how we're spacing desks and wearing masks and not sharing materials and things of that nature. But a lot of work has gone into that level of detail. I'm happy to share more if there are other questions, but that one particular example we have talked a lot about regarding limiting sharing materials and keeping individualized learning kits for students.
A couple of quick things.
Sure.
One is, I think it's important to take those measures to reduce touch contamination. That said, the evidence is building that transmission by contact is relatively unlikely compared with transmission by breeding in the shared space. So we should take those steps, but we also should not, you know, freak out if we have a coat hung up in the wrong cubby or something like that.
I agree with you, I think it's a very important balance on having our school day be enjoyable and some sort of normalcy for our children and not being completely over the top either, so I'm hoping and praying that we are going to find a, a good balance with that, because I, I agree.
The second thing is, I know we said we would try to treat PEP the same as we treat the elementary schools, but PEP is already only a couple of hours long, so what does it mean if we pick a half-day model? Does, does PEP just have its normal schedule then, or, or what?
So preschool, or we call preschool, or as we call PEP, currently runs, would be running four days a week, the morning session is a three-year-old, afternoons a four-year-old. So we would still run a similar schedule, it'd be a little bit modified. Dr. Morris and I have met with Lori Grant and also Lisa Huppie about that in terms of how to structure the day. So again, whether we're looking at preschool through the lens of kindergarten in terms of an AM PM kind of model, or if we look at remote, looking at preschool as a targeted assistance age group, where we would provide them with more in-person instruction.
And Catherine, just following up on Michael's question, if the board were to choose a two-day-in model as opposed to an AM PM model, we would then want to separate preschool from the kindergarten and, and continue an AM PM model?
Yes.
Would we not?
Yes, we could, yes, if, if the board was, you know, favored that, we would want to bring preschool in as, as much as we can. So if they came, if kindergarten came in two days a week, we would still ask that you consider that preschool be brought in for the four days a week. Again, as our, we've looked at our numbers, they, they are small right now. Typically, what happens with our program is we, we are not a program that is like kindergarten in terms of enroll, enroll every student. We start with students who are identified, and then we try to build our classrooms into 50% model, so 50% students who are identified with a disability, who have an IEP, and 50% of students who are more typical learners. We would put a cap on those typical learners, so that the students who need to get the services would get the services, so we would keep those under 10. And we could easily do that right now, based on what the numbers are at. One of our classrooms is, I believe we've been at six or seven right now.
Great, thank you.
Could we, could we move maybe to the elementary four?
Yes, sir. Elementary four, this is a hybrid remote with targeted groups K4, so it's, it's all of our students who, and again, this is an example schedule. I, I have heard from some parents this week with concern about this slide that has been shared at our other workshops because of the amount of live in-time person that is on this schedule. Our task force have talked about two to three times a day of live check-in with children, whether that's whole group, small group, or individual. I've also had families say, if my child's going to be in childcare with a grandparent and I'm working, there is no way that we're going to be able to do this many live times. The reason that we worked on increasing live times was based on the parent survey input, that there was inconsistencies with children who saw their teacher once or twice a week, and children who did not see their teacher at all live through Microsoft Teams. So we, that's just an area that we've reflected on, that we'd like to grow in, so again, this, it's just an example. But again, a hybrid, the hybrid with the targeted groups K through four.
So just for clarity, this is when I put a question mark. So in this model, only the targeted group of the K through four comes into the school, everybody else is remote?
Correct.
So let me add, again, I'll throw the puzzler question at you once more. What, what kind of numbers is that, that's coming into the school?
That gets very tricky, that would be looking, I mean, honestly, that's looking at students who are identifying special education likely, looking at 504 students. It may be students who are not identified through Section 504 or special education, but they're families that we know well, and we know might be at risk for a variety of other reasons, be that food, shelter, parent support, internet, a variety of reasons. I, I-
I would say, it's about 20%, Al.
Okay.
We were working with numbers, you know, if you take your special education numbers, your 504 numbers, and you're struggling, students' numbers, and just a broad percentage, it's about a fifth of the students at every building.
If those students did come in, this next slide is just talking about why they would come in, whether that's SEL activities, you know, check-ins, doing some assessments to ensure where our students are performing and how we need to respond to those assessments. Targeted groups could come in, depending on the group and the need, is often as deemed necessary to meet students' needs. This is the K4 remote with targeted groups, again, just explaining who, the groups, disadvantaged youth is listed, special ed 504. The MTSS process, I think, would be really important in determining the children that would come in, based on a variety of needs, be that social, emotional, behavioral, academic. Here's the fifth model, this is remote instruction with no targeted groups. This would be fully remote at the, at the K4 level. This is obviously the most risk-free option, but again, as I've shared, I, I, I just worry greatly about our youngest learners, starting out remote.
Maybe, maybe a question for Todd. In terms of, obviously, a lot of time and energy was spent over the summer working with Portsmouth, you know, with the team you put together. What does the process look like to sort of convey what was learned and maybe decided to the entire body of teachers? And how does that get facilitated in terms of, like, we've talked about, you know, needing to do multiple things at the same time. Let's say we start with a hybrid model, but we want to be ready in the eventuality that we need, we are, let's say the governor issues another order, we have to go remote again. What does the process look like to prepare our teachers to be ready for that remote learning model in a span of time greater than three days?
Right. Well, first of all, you're absolutely right, it's, it will require more than three days, and we're going to talk about that later on, about our recommendation for school start time, because regardless of which model that is selected, a significant amount of time is going to be needed to do professional development and to really work through a lot of these things with staff. The other, the other piece, which is also part of one of the later slides, is how we open school and sort of gradually transition to the model, because no matter what we end up doing, school is going to look different for kids and parents and teachers when they walk in, in, in the fall, and we have to ramp up for that. We've had an incredible group of, you know, 60 professionals working in all these task force this summer, and now those people now are going to be tasked with bringing a lot of this stuff back and working with their colleagues and bringing some professional development forward. On top of that, we have our tech integration specialists who are fantastic, and in fact, I'm meeting with them, we're spending a day tomorrow, really beginning to map out what are all the technology things that our staff need to really, to expand their, their skills and repertoire. Two Revs is also at, as you, you mentioned when we were working with Portsmouth, Two Revs is the professional development entity that we've been working with, and they have a number of PD services that they're going to work with us to help provide, mostly in the mode of sort of trainer-trainer type stuff, so it's where it becomes more self-sustaining in how we kind of move forward. It also brings back the importance of the ongoing relearning days and PD opportunities for teachers, because we can start on day one with, whether it's full remote or, or some hybrid variation thereof, and we're not going to know until we really get into, into the weeds and really see how kids are reacting, what adjustments we need to make, and we need time to, to catch our breath periodically and sort of assess, how are things working? If we're in a targeted group model, how, what are the supports that absolutely work best, having kids in person, and what ones can we safely and, and effectively do virtually? So I don't have all the answers on, on that, Dan, but you're absolutely right, that is a huge piece of this, and I think we just need to make sure we carve out the time and map it out. We do have a good, with the proposal that's in front of you, we're envisioning as many as seven days at the beginning of the school year to give our staff time to get in, go through all of the normal stuff that they need to do to get back on the ground, but then to give time to sort of process all this, because to me, one of the, my, my greatest fear in terms of bringing students back on campus is we do all this work to create these structures and these, these systems to make sure we're, we're keeping kids safe, and then they immediately revert to normal behaviors, and within 15 minutes, sort of, we've, we've kind of lost the value of all this work we've done because of the cohorts have mixed and all of that kind of stuff. And so there's a lot of learning just procedurally of how to make things happen. So yes, there's a ton of PD.
And Todd, Todd, if I could just add one final thought in relation to Dan's question. Every model that we've developed, Dan, has the ability of going complete remote or complete in, so it's not like we have one model and then, oh my goodness, we have to create a new model. From the get-go, it's one model that transitions across the spectrum, depending on what the board's decision is.
Yeah, yeah, and really, all of these are, it's, it's a continuum of options that we just need to be prepared to fluidly move through.
So is this, this question, so theoretically, if we had to shut down the school because COVID has reared, this would be our default, right?
That's right.
It's an example, I want to emphasize that it's an example, and that there would be more work done to find-
I understand.
Yeah.
It kind of shows what, or, I'll throw this out, here's the more complicated one. So you have, a class comes in, a kid tests positive for COVID, you're like, I guess that class would have to quarantine for two weeks. Would this be kind of what they would be, something like this would be how they'd be going, right?
Yes, we've talked a lot about, I think, what Dr. Morris and Mr. Allen were talking about, is how to pivot at any given time, whether that's for a small class, a half of a class, depending on the model, a grade level, a wing of a building, there's a variety of ways that that could play out. This, from a COVID perspective, is the safest model. From a social, emotional, academic, there's concerns with being fully remote. That's what this slide is. And I just can't emphasize enough for the parents who are listening and who have reached out, that there is flexibility within this example for this live in, in-person time. We will certainly work with our families to be sure the students are successful, based on the availability of who is caring for their children when they're not in person.
Thank you, Misty.
You're welcome. This is just, this is the last slide, it's talking about the reasons that we'd like to phase in if we are in person or not, in order to prepare our teachers, prepare our students, our parents. We need to debrief with our kids about the experience that we all had in order to move forward. So this slide just talks about assessments and another, you know, a variety of ways we would use that phase-in approach with our kids this fall. Thank you.
Further discussion? Well? Denise?
Again, I think the part of my concern also with the half-day models is it, from the parent feedback, it seemed like working parents had the most concern with that model, and it seemed like a lot of parents were saying, you know, I can't make this work if it's half a day, and, I mean, I think any choice we make, we're going to have parents that go elsewhere or do something, you know, or go remote, or, or do whatever. But I, I, again, I do have those concerns about the half-day.
Further discussion? Okay, the way it will work is, we'll, because we have to do a roll call, that will be slowing things down a little bit. So we'll take the fully in-person, and I'll call the roll, and say yes or no.
Is there any discussion when we do this, or you just vote and that's it, we move on, or how does that work?
You just discuss.
If you have discussion, if you have discussion, you know, have it now, but I think when you start with the voting, we have to, we have to proceed.
Okay, well then I'll, I'll, should I start with my thoughts? Okay, well then I'll, should I start with my thoughts on the elementary and just throw them out there and move through the voting?
Sure, sure.
So, you know, I looked at this, and I think Misty kind of summed it up very well about the lowest risk is remote, but the wreckage is so catastrophic with that. I just can't do it. It's like, and I, and I know that we identified the K through 2 as the group to bring in, but, I mean, a third grader is eight years old. I cannot possibly imagine an eight-year-old doing a self, well, if they're lucky enough to have a parent sitting at the computer, which is what a mom just told me today, it would work, it worked with her third grader in the spring because she sat physically next to him with the screen, but there's just no way. I think the fallout will be, it's just asking too much. Fourth grade, maybe, maybe, but I just don't feel, I think that elementary kids, it is, the remote is not going to work. It's not, I mean, even with the best intention and the best technology, I don't think it'll be, it'll work. And I think even looking at those supposed third graders who are going to go remote, they were second graders and lost the last part of the year. So I just think that we have to go K through 4, the half-day in. We just have to. It's, the loss would just be too great. So that's my impassioned plea for the elementary. I think they're different than the middle school, and they're different from the high school because they just aren't ready for the virtual component to take over. And so the risk of the loss, the permanent loss, is greater in my mind, and I'm not minimizing the 157,000 people who've died and how terrible COVID is. But I think that this group particularly, we really need to try to get them some direct instruction.
Tom? Denise?
So I'm just curious, in terms of the board's feelings about that half-day versus, like, two full-day, you know, I.
I'd prefer a full day over a half-day. But it's, there's so many pluses and minuses to both of them. It's just very difficult. But I do feel, same reason you do, I think it's a, it's a real hardship to working parents. And that's the one thing that's kind of sticking to my, my cries. You know, I understand the school of thought behind it, and I think it works. But especially, you know, I'm the only one here from Lee, and Lee is, we probably have the most working parents of all the three towns, and that's what I really need to look out for. And it's tough to tell them that they can only work half a day, or they need to take a half a day off, or they need to take FMLA, or whatever it is, to make sure their kids get an education. And it's kind of difficult. And I think a lot of parents would, you know, find ultimate means if that was the case, and that's the concern I have. So, I mean, it's, if I was to agree with Denise, we wouldn't, none of these choices would actually fit into what I want, or what I would prefer. But I definitely think all four grades have to be in. I can guarantee you that. Or five grades.
So I have a suggestion then, because I understand the way we're proceeding with these votes is we're going to see how many, like, sort of are in favor of each type. Can we add a two-day hybrid and just kind of, as we're doing our votes, like, add that into the mix and see where the support is for that?
So now, I'd like to talk to, I mean, that's fine. Do you think that's?
Yeah, I think, you know, one of the things that we're at is we're at the place where the board is, you know, making a decision that they're comfortable with and representing our students and our community. You know, we had given you the rationale for the AM PM. It is strictly educational. It's not about, as Brian said, focusing on not just the two-person families, but the single-parent families. And, you know, in an ideal world, AM PM would service us the best, but we also have to think in terms of our community. And although it isn't on the list, it was something we talked about extensively, and probably the issue that, in terms of the dozens upon dozens of emails we read, that there was a consistent kind of thread through them in terms of parental concern that Brian articulated and Denise articulated. I guess what I'm trying to say is, as Denise said at the beginning, every one of these has pluses and minuses. None of these, could any of us stand up and say, this is the model that fits everybody's needs. So it's really, at this point, at your discretion as to whether you want to have them on.
So can I make a suggestion, Denise? Can we just make that option six?
Sure.
So option six would be, so each, would it be each?
Yeah, what is option six?
What is options?
The way I see option six, it would be bringing every student K through 4 in for two days a week. And then the other two days would be, or other three days, I guess, really, would be remote.
Could I add an addendum to that for you to think about?
Yes, absolutely.
If you're thinking two days, is there a way that, again, you could consider that targeted group of students that may need more than two days? And again, we'd be very careful with our numbers and look at the scheduling of that. But if there were students who needed further targeted assistance, that you would consider having them in more than two days. And it might be a couple hours, you know, not talking about a third full day, but just in terms of meeting their needs.
Yes.
Okay, completely, yeah.
I would just like to say that if, my reservation with the two days is, if you're looking at continuity for, who are the most vulnerable learners here?
Yeah.
You know, where if you have this big gap, and, you know, I think you're talking with K1, you know, where they're building these foundational skills. And I think just being in school two days a week is really, I think this is a model that's, you know, the logic of it, and I understand it, is that for childcare, it's probably a better model. I think for education, it's really not a good model, because I think focused instruction, two and a half hours a day, the continuity is really important, particularly for the younger learners. And I think this is, I think this is maybe a workable model. I don't think it's as good a model as the half-day.
From a logistical perspective, I know that we can clean classrooms and clean buses in that interval in the middle of the day, but that is a challenge. And doing, alternating days removes that chance of something lingering in the air and of us in a classroom. It removes the burden of making sure that happens within that, whatever it is, hour, hour and a half interval between the morning and the afternoon.
Okay.
I think what really gives me, you know, I guess, a little bit of, I agree, no good answers. I think there's trade-offs either way. I think there is a lot that we'll learn from the first nine weeks of doing either one of those. And really, what I'd hope is that we find that we have the ability to add more days, potentially even full days for certain groups, like the kindergartners and first graders, based on enrollment and space as we get into this. I'm not saying to do that now, but as we see how this rolls out. Also, I don't know if you went over these, your assumptions?
I did. That was, I didn't bring those in.
Okay. So the one that I think is really significant, we've actually touched on most of these, but just really explicitly, with any option that involves in-person learning, I think it's really important that we offer a remote option alongside that. And we talk about, we target, have to talk about targeted learners with these, but we don't talk about families that have, do not have a risk tolerance that enables them to have their child in school even half the time. And I want to make sure that that is at least considered and either implicit in all of these or a separate consideration as well.
So in the current model that we're talking about, the elementary, Todd and Catherine and I went through all of the requests from staff about not returning, and there were about 55 of them. And, but only about three at each school related to classroom teachers. So to do a remote model, we would actually have to seek volunteers to come out of the classroom and do remote. So to do both, we'd have to go with a group of teachers who are present and a group of teachers who are willing to go remote. I think that that's doable, Michael. I think that if we presented it that way, there are, there are teachers in the system who didn't have health issues, so they didn't come forward, but who may have personal issues, that a remote model would be more appealing to them. And so that also, going back to all of Misty's presentations, when students are present, would obviously reduce the number of children in the building. So I have been working towards that goal right from the beginning of the summer. Now, having seen the staffing, I would have to seek out staff who would wish to teach remote in order to service all the children, who, at this point, all the families who have expressed an interest. So that August 10 enrollment number that we talked about a little bit earlier is critical in order for me to see exactly who's going to stay remote and who's going to choose whatever model the board chooses tonight. And at that point, then I'm in a position to say for certain, this is the staffing I need, and I have worked with Misty and David, will have figured it out at Catherine, and we'll go forward. By the time we meet again in two weeks, all of that, all of those pieces will have been in play enough so that I can come back and say we're definitely in the driver's seat in terms of offering remote and a hybrid model, if that's what you choose. I think it's still possible. I've thought it's possible from the beginning of the summer, but I would be able to give you a definitive answer for sure in two weeks.
So we can't decide tonight, if I'm hearing you correctly, like Michael said, with a solid assumption that a full remote option?
I think that you can direct me to make it happen, and I'm going to work tirelessly to make it happen. But it requires my getting teachers to volunteer as opposed to directing them. Now, do I have the authority to direct them? Of course. But if you want people to be invested in what they're doing, they come forward. So my first, my first action would be to reach out. My last action would be, I need you to do this. So, I mean, I do have that authority, but I always try to work people from the positive instead of the negative.
Denise?
Yeah, I mean, judging from all the letters we received, it certainly looks like we'd have a substantial percentage of families that are saying, I'm just, I don't care what model you have, my child is not coming to school. So if we want to keep those students in our district, then we would need to offer remote.
And also remember, we did survey the staff themselves, regardless, excuse me, regardless of health issues.
Right.
And a good number of staff would prefer remote. So I think, and I continue to say it this way, and Michael wants me to say black and white, I know he does, but I keep and say, I think I can do it. And that's what we've been working toward right from the get-go. And I think the staffing surveys, the parent surveys are lining up. And once I know for sure from the parents, then I can make everything, I can connect the dots. I just, I'm almost there. I just have to have that definitive data to be able to deliver it.
I just wanted to ask the board briefly, when considering option six, to think about the management perspective of our youngest learners having to wear masks all day, being six feet apart all day. I mean, I think even at two and a half hours, that is going to be a challenge for some of these littles. So to think of doing that two full days is just another perspective I wanted to bring up.
Thank you for bringing that up. That certainly, that is a good point.
I would like to.
Well, so regarding the remote option, how do you want to treat that? Is that implicit? Or do you want a separate motion on that later? Or, for me, that's very important. I don't want to vote for a, I cannot vote for any model that forces a family to send their kid to school whose risk tolerance does not want them to do that. So the answer to that makes a big difference for me in what my vote is.
And it's just not even that, Michael. If we have 700 families that are out there, we're going to have 700 families homeschool. It doesn't make any sense if we can provide the remote learning. So, I mean, I'm comfortable with you guys directing me. I'm just telling you right now, I'm close, but I'm not there.
It's a work in progress.
It's close. It's as close as it's ever been.
Do you need more than that, or do you need a?
Well, what's going to be in the registration materials on Monday? I guess that's the question.
Exactly the model we choose tonight. So the families will say, I am going to participate in the model chosen by the board, and the model will be spelled out. And then I am going to use the transportation system or I am not. And then I am going to keep my child remote. So those three questions answer the demographic issue, and that tells me what my staffing needs are.
So can we, I think that we have to say that we directed to develop a.
Well, I.
I'm sorry. I think that we do have to say that we will develop a remote, that we've directed Jim to do it. I think we can't have it so squishy that we're almost there. We got to do that. And it's like, so I think that in the packet material that goes out, if it so passes amongst this board, it would say that we will have developed a remote options for families who decide to go remote.
So can we, can we go ahead and deal with 1 through 6, and then can we?
Do that later.
Have that as a separate discussion, brief discussion item before we move on to?
I think, is there pretty much consensus that we would direct Jim to develop a, that whatever motion, that whatever, that implicit in all of these, well, I guess the full remote wouldn't make any sense, but.
Yeah, make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we direct Jim to develop a remote option.
I'll second.
Okay. Discussion on that? All, oh, we got it, remote. Are we going to vote on that?
That was Alan.
Was it Dan you seconded?
Yes, I seconded.
Okay. Are we ready to vote on that? Okay. Denise Day?
Yes.
Al Holland?
Yes.
Dan Klein?
Yes.
Francis Narrows?
Yes.
Michael Williams?
Yes.
Thomas Newkirk? Yes. Okay, that directive is made.
Cleared that off.
Okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Are we ready to vote on the options? Okay. The way it'll work is, I'll have to take a roll call on the fully remote. I'll have to take a roll call on all of them. So it's a little bit of a pain because we have to do it that way.
Yeah.
But I think it'll go fairly quickly.
Would it work to just ask each person which one they prefer? Or is that not allowed?
That's not a, would that be a satisfactory roll, what?
Wouldn't work under Robert's rules.
It would not?
No, it fits.
Okay, all right. It says roll call, so, you know, bear with me, okay? So fully remote, I'll go through the rolls and see if they say yes or no, okay? So fully remote, Denise Day?
No.
Al Holland?
No.
Dan Klein?
No.
Francis Narrows?
No.
Michael Williams?
No.
Tom Newkirk? No. So that's zero, that's removed. So you can cross that one out.
Can I just ask one question? We can vote more than once, though, right? I mean, if there's like two, like, if there's two options I can live with, can I vote for both of them?
No.
I don't know. Because you said if there was a certain number, but I don't know. Are we only voting one?
No, you have to vote for one.
Oh, I only have to vote for one?
Yeah, you have one vote.
One vote, okay.
Okay. Hybrid, AM, PM, half-days.
Can you add the number as well?
Number two, number two, okay?
Wait, wait a minute, I don't, wait a minute.
Should we start at the five?
Can we, can we have the slide that, is there a way to get the correct slide with what we're voting on? Because I want to make sure I'm voting on the right, the right.
Our first vote was number, option five.
Yeah.
Correct, okay.
All right.
I'm sorry, first, I'm sorry.
No, it was option one.
First vote was number one.
I believe you said fully remote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Fully remote is elementary five, so we just.
Okay, so we voted that, I'm sorry, that's, okay, that's.
So we did five, and it's gone.
Five is out. So fully, fully.
So you want to go back up to elementary one?
I'll go back up to elementary, I'm sorry, I'm.
Okay.
Thank you for, thank you, okay. So five is out. We're at elementary one?
Wait a minute.
Fully in-person?
Yes.
Wait a minute. So this is bringing everybody K through 4 in for, how many, four days a week?
Yes, on campus.
Oh, no. Oh, okay, okay. This is the one where they stay all day. Got it, okay.
Okay. Denise Day?
No.
Al Holland?
No.
Dan Klein?
No.
Francis Narrows?
No.
Michael Williams?
No.
Tom Newkirk? No. So that one is out. So fully remote and fully in-person are out. So now we're coming to elementary 2, half-days, four days a week.
And this one is K4. Everybody would come in for half a day, correct?
And then be at home the other half.
Okay, oh boy.
Okay. Are we ready for this? Denise Day?
Yes.
Al Holland?
Yes.
Dan Klein?
Yes.
Francis Narrows?
Yes.
Michael Williams?
Yes.
Tom Newkirk? Yes. This is our choice. Okay, it's done.
Thank you.
See, I told you the elementary would be the hardest.
Could you confirm it for PEP as well?
You better be right.
We don't know that.
So the vote, the vote was 6-0 in favor of elementary 2, hybrid, AM, PM, half-days.
And could you confirm that for PEP as well?
And could you confirm that for PEP as well?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So...
So let's go to the high school, because the middle school is the one that we...
Okay.
Can I just clarify something, Denise, when you asked about the meals? We are required by the, our agreement with the USDA to offer meals to all children to protect confidentiality of those who get free and reduced meals. So those who do not qualify for free and reduced meals would also be offered meals, but we would discharge their accounts.
Thanks, Doris.
Okay.
Now, would you, would the group like a break? Would you like a break now, between now, or would you like to go directly into, how do you feel?
Let's keep going, I think.
Okay. So, high school?
Pause it.
Good evening. I'm just going to go back.
Hmm.
Okay. So for the high school, I'm going to discuss five models. You've seen all of these models, so some of the slides will, well, they all look very familiar. I did add the fully return also into this, into the models. So the first model is everyone's back in, we're following a blue and white day schedule. The schedule's not going to change regardless of the model, so the schedule is the last slide, and I'll share that with everybody. This is going to be very challenging for the high school. Again, we'll have over 1,000 people in the building, social distancing, cohorting, all of those would be impossible in this model. However, you do have students accessing their teachers every day, and the issue of equity is not a factor. The second model for the high school is 50% returning per day on alternating days. Again, this is a model that we've discussed before. So we would have two grade levels in on two days a week, and then the other two grade levels would be in two days a week. And the, one of the days, as discussed in the elementary level, one of the days in the high school would be a partial relearning reassessment day, PD for faculty, and some other activities occurring such as clubs and things like that remotely. So this, this model has some of the same challenges as everybody in. We would have approximately 425 students and around 200 adults, and we would be mixing cohorts. So we would, students would be in the building, they would be following their schedule, and so to follow a schedule for a high school student means that they have different, different kids with them each period of the day. If you, if you need, if you have any questions, please feel free to interrupt. And then for the third model, we have remote instruction with in-person flex and additional targeted learners coming in more frequently. This, this allows us to have smaller cohorts because students would be coming in one day a week, and I will show you the weekly model in a minute. They would be coming in one day a week, they would be coming in for a few hours for in-person flexible time. They would be with their advisory and scheduling out to meet with teachers in the building. So our cohorts would be smaller, we would have a fewer number of students, it would make it easier for social distancing, for cleaning, things like that. It would also allow us that in-person time with students, some more human connection, and the ability to bring in check-in with all students that are able to come to school.
A question about that. I'm still trying to understand, so when, when, but all the students would come in, so on that one day, there would still be the total, you know...
No, so what, well, one day we would, what we would do is we would have a smaller group of students coming in. So for instance, we would have, here's, here's an example of what it would look like, I'll go back. So from 8:15 to 10:15, we may have the ninth grade come in. And so we would just have the ninth grade in the building, they would be in their advisory, they would be able to schedule out to see teachers, we could do some programming with them, and we would, we would take that time with just the ninth grade. And then they would leave, and another group of students could come in, in the PM, let's say 11th grade. So then 11th grade would come in from 1:00 to 3:00, and in between that time, it's sort of that half-day model that you were looking at with the elementary school during that time, that, that, that transition time would allow us to have all the students leaving, allow time for cleaning, and for new students to come in. And faculty would be working from the building on Wednesdays.
Okay, so if you did that, though, you could never get, so not everybody would do in-person flex every week under that model?
Correct.
Okay, and then the, the second thing is, which is, which I think is troubling, is the concept of sending a kid off to see his teacher, because that then destroys the cohort. You're like, we're, you know, it doesn't work. It'd be like, it'd be mixing, so, I mean, that's just my initial...
Yes, that is one of the challenges with the high school model, just because of the nature of our elective-based system, is cohorting. So this, this would get kids in the building, it would allow us to contact trace. We would have fewer students in the building, so we could have kids spread out over multiple classrooms, and teachers would be having students come to them, and so we would be able to have students, you know, socially distanced. But we would be able to contact trace because we would be utilizing our adaptive scheduler, which is what we traditionally use for a flex time. And so the kids schedule out to see teachers that are available and say that they're available. So, so if Denise had time in her day as a teacher, she would let everybody know through adaptive scheduler that I have 30 minutes available to see my Algebra II kids, and then the Algebra II kids would go in and see that Denise is available to give that extra help, and they would schedule themselves in, and we can block out the number of kids going to see Denise. So we could say only five kids could go in for Algebra II help at that time. And so that's, that's the software that we have that allows us to do that. So we could, we could limit the number of kids moving throughout the building that way. We can identify who's going where and which kids are in the room at any given time.
So this is like, with the elementary, you said targeted one day is not enough, so I assume it's kind of the same with high school. So how did the targeted, if, in this model, a targeted kid who needs extra help only gets one day a week, right?
We would be looking at bringing in, and students that are in need of additional supports, we would look at bringing them in additional days.
So if that...
In any of these, in any of these models, targeted, except for the very last model, which is everybody fully remote, we would be looking at identifying kids that need additional supports and ensuring that we can have them come in multiple times during the week.
Okay.
So that's that bottom line asterisk, qualified days, special circumstances?
Yep, sorry, missed that.
Yep. And that we would work with faculty to determine, and parents. So an example of what it would look like, and again, this is just an example, September 23rd, current, right now, is our 12th grade SAT, New Hampshire State testing in person. That's the date that we would be bringing, for that particular date, that's a Wednesday, we would have the entire 12th grade in. But then the following Wednesday, the 30th, we could look at having ninth grade in the morning, 11th grade in the afternoon, and then it, and we work through that schedule. There are some Wednesdays, we have PSATs and SATs coming up in September and October, and those are in-person pencil, paper tests at the state. So, so those would be days that would already be predetermined. But for the most part, we would be looking at having 25% of the population come in for that in-person time. The fourth is fully remote with targeted learners coming in, and so this L is a little bit of what you were speaking about. So we would have all of the students home, except for students that may need additional support. This could be for a variety of different reasons. And we would cohort those kids together in small groups, and we would adhere to all of the necessary precautions for social distancing and PPE.
So the targeted group could change over time, right?
Yes. Yep, and, and we have our MTSS model, and some of the work that we did in the spring, we have some, some data that we would be pulling from last year also to help us identify kids at the start of the school year. And then we would work with those families and with the faculty to ensure that we started the school year already with a group of students coming in. But some of those students may change as the year progresses.
Suzanne, I think it's also important to share with the board that you would be required to bring in students for statewide testing that could occupy a day instead of targeted learners. The state is insisting that the high school go forward with the SAT in September, right?
Yes.
And so she would have to bring the juniors in?
This year it'll be the seniors, the juniors, because they missed it last year, we need to bring them back in and administer. And unlike in the spring of last year, which was going to be computer-based, this year it'll be paper-based.
And I would expect that our participation would probably be incredibly low, where we normally have, you know, a high 90 percentile, I expect, because of people choosing remote, and people who just don't want to be in the building, that our participation levels will be significantly lower.
So Suzanne, with the flex model, how many more students would you be bringing in, say, in the school than you would in the targeted model? Or is that, I mean, that's probably...
So the targeted model could be probably, you know, I think it'll range depending on the time of the year. I mean, we may start off with a small percentage of 5% of the kids, and I can't speak to the identified students, I'd leave that to Melissa and Catherine to talk a little bit about that, but, for, and 504 students, but I would say that probably, you know, 5%, at most, we'd get up to 10% of students that would be...
So it'd be 80?
Yeah, around 80, at most.
At most?
Yes.
Okay, and in the, in the flex model, how many students would you be bringing in in a week?
So the classes range, so probably around 220 per class approximately, and then the targeted learners that are not within that class. So you're probably talking around 300, maybe 300 kids in the building in the morning, and then another 300 kids in the building in the afternoon, plus the adults.
Okay.
Which is close, depending on, you know, we, if you, if you think about all of the adults that are in this building, you're talking approximately 200 people.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Yeah. Denise?
So how would, busing, now that we, okay, we say, we've got the elementary, we're doing the AM and the PM, so there's going to be bus runs in the morning, midday, end of day, and then you throw in like, high school model, like, how will that work?
Well, I mean, that's, that's an excellent question, Denise, and that's why I've been saying that even though our buses will have fewer students on them, they'll be out all day long, because it may be that Suzanne identifies an AP chemistry group of kids to come in, and they could be literally living at the opposite end of the district. So, you know, the, what Lisa, Lisa and I have been talking about, and Lisa, you're welcome to come to the podium on this question if you want, is that, you know, we have approximately 30 vehicles, 24 buses, we started talking about dedicating buses just to the high school, dedicating buses to the middle school, and dedicating buses to the two elementary schools rather than having them overlap like we do now. And so, you know, we'll, we will have to reinvent the bus, the bus times on, when we're using targeted learners, and, and that's why I said the 26 students per bus on the window seats, windows down, masks on, gives us as safe a ride as we could possibly create, and we're also putting up a barrier for the drivers, looks like a chow-wa curtain, actually. But, you know, and Denise, Lisa and I have talked through this several times, and it'll be complex, but we think we can pull it off.
We didn't talk about which day is the relearning day for elementary, but if it happened to be Wednesday, then your only overlap would be your targeted learners, not the entire...
Correct.
That's true.
Yeah, in our vision of all of this, if we're going to have a relearning day, it's always going to be Wednesday, because we felt Friday was not a, not a good day for it. Lisa, is there anything else you wanted to add?
It would depend on enrollment for transportation as well, that's going to be a huge part of it. So once I know the numbers, I think probably what you just said designated for high school, middle school, and then elementary, we wouldn't need to overlap in preschool.
So Suzanne, do you see like the, the, the remote with targeted learners? It seems to me it's almost like a kind of an evolution that could go towards remote, the flex model. I mean, it seems to me like you could begin to, to start opening up gradually as you gain a sense of safety or whatever. I wonder, I wonder if these are like, this model and this model, or whether it's this model you start, you could start out with and then gradually bring in maybe more groups than that, that original 5%, you know? So how do you, how do you see these two kind of coming together?
I think, I, I think when I, it's exactly like that, in that I think if we start small, I want, I think this model, I tried to make it so that it was fluid, so that as time progresses, we could bring more kids in, we could back away from bringing kids in, which is why the schedule is the same, there's no change of schedule regardless of the model, so that kids could come in, you know, if, if we feel comfortable, if the school board feels comfortable at some point where we could allow having a class, you know, part of a day where kids are coming in for a few periods of the day, or, you know, it really allows itself that fluid, type of a, type of a situation. So yes, I do, I do see that, and that was, that, yes, it's intentional.
I mean, just, just one, for example, like whether, whether you might say at some point, well, chemistry has to come in at some point to do a lab, and, you know, you could control, but maybe not at the beginning, but you might work towards having that be a cohort group that comes in because it's pretty critical, difficult to do a chemistry lab at home. You know, that, I'm not saying that particular decision, but that kind of decision would be...
Yes, and there are a lot of classes that are like that, that really would benefit from being in-person, and that's something that, I have a department head meeting later on this week, and that's one of the things that, that we'll be talking about, is, you know, which, whatever model it is that you choose, you know, which classes are going to be the most challenged with that model, and how, and what are we going to need to do to be able to support the needs of the faculty.
Denise?
In, in this model, is Wednesday still like your flex day for everyone, or it's just a flex, it's just a flex day for the, for the targeted group?
So the targeted groups primarily would be coming in on Wednesdays, however, there will be students that are coming in more than that, depending, again, depending on their need. The majority of kids are going to be at home, and this is what they would be doing if they were at home. They would have that relearning reassessment in the morning, which is basically in office hours. There are a lot of teachers that did, in the spring, there were teachers that were holding discussion groups, they were doing presentations, they were doing a lot of different things during that relearning and reassessment period. They were meeting with kids, there were, so we'd like to make sure that the students still have that opportunity to do that. And then we would, we found that frequent advisory check-ins were really beneficial for students, so I have an advisory check-in that day, so that kids will check in with, just, just to say, hi, I'm here, and this is what I'm working on for the day. Clubs, we've, we've noticed in the spring of last year that kids really wanted to get back into their clubs. Sustainability club, game club, all these different clubs, it was really difficult to get them off and going in the spring because the change was so quick. Now we have time to be able to plan and prepare for that, and faculty and kids really would like to get that started again. So this schedule would give us time for those clubs also on the Wednesday. And then that, that PD time, in the spring, we had a lot of faculty doing, meeting it with departments during, on the Wednesday, they'd have department meetings, they'd be talking, they would talk about curriculum, they would talk about, we had some faculty working together to do some interdisciplinary work. We had John Bromley and Marika and Maria Rosie, they were getting together to do some interdisciplinary work. So that time was really beneficial for faculty, and I'd like to be able to give that to them again if we are in a fully remote model. Or, or remote instruction with the targeted groups. And then the last one is the full, fully remote, and I think, again, the things that make fully in-person difficult are the things that make fully remote less of a, you know, those are the benefits. So it's a, it's a trade-off, and the schedule would look the same as the one that I just showed you, where the students would have relearning and reassessment in the morning would have relearning and reassessment in the morning on Wednesdays, if it was Wednesday, with advisory check-in, lunch, and then clubs with students and faculty. And the, this is the day. So one of the things, as you said, Tom, that we really would like to do in the, in the task force, spent a lot of time talking about the schedule, is to make sure that the schedule is fluid. So regardless, so we can shift, and we can, and it will not be difficult for students to make that shift or for faculty. So this schedule, we would use it whether we were in person or whether we were at home. And lunch, the offset of lunch would be advisory, which is something we have not done in the past. However, I think it's the, it's the most, it's the easiest way to, to have the schedule be fluid. So half the school would be an advisory and the other half would be a lunch, and then we would flip-flop.
So if we would, maybe I'm just asking the same question a couple times. If we would approve the, the remote instruction, in-person targeted learners, would there be the possible, you know, are we kind of like saying you have to limit it to this early group? Or are we saying it should start out that way and you should have some flexibility to kind of expand modestly as you, as you find it safely towards more, you know, more group? I mean, like, you would never say, okay, that probably the chemistry class is a targeted group, right, initially?
In this, in this scenario, when I speak of targeted groups, I'm talking about targeted groups through MTSS.
Yeah.
So I'm not, I'm not speaking about specific classes.
So-
But, yeah, we have talked about ninth grade being a targeted group.
Okay. So I guess I'm saying it's just static, where you'd have like these groups that are defined at the beginning, and then, or would you have the flexibility to say, okay, as things were moving, you know, maybe into the fourth or fifth week, we really need to maybe bring in a chemistry lab, even though those weren't part of your originally targeted groups? Or would you rather have it be, let's hold off on that till maybe the second quarter?
I think that would be up to your determination. If you would like to give us the flexibility to be able to do that from the, from the start, then I think we would wait to do that. And then until that, you know, I think, I would like to see how the building functions, and how people are moving, and kids are, and kids are doing, and how, and how, and get, get people into some type of a structure before I would start bringing people, start bringing, you know, classes in and all of that. I'd like to see the way that it functions and the way it's working before we start determining. And that's a, that's a hard determination, to decide which classes get to come in and which classes do not get to come in. So that's going to take a lot of faculty work. So, but if you would, if, that's, that's up to the school board to make that determination, and I'm happy to-
So, Tom, that's why we talked about the quarterly timelines. So I think the key to what you just said is, you know, Suzanne would have modest ability to, to flex. I think if we're going to make a completely new model, then this body needs to be involved, knowing that it's coming, so that it, so there's no surprises here, there's no surprises in the community. I think, you know, the choice you make is, is a choice for seven weeks, and then Suzanne will be reporting back, just as the other administrators are, in terms of how the model's going. And, and then, yes, I'm ready to move forward to the next level, or this is pretty touch and go right now, or she needs to back off. So I just, yeah.
Okay. I got it. Yeah?
So again, that's why I asked, was, because I think the problem with targeted groups is when you're making this assumption, which is a correct one, the kids that, that are having difficulties or struggling, and so that's a targeted group. But my, my thing I said before all that was that the target changes. It varies. It will, it will vary as you go along. And so that's kind of along this. I, I don't want to lock us into the quarterly schedule, because we haven't approved the schedule yet. I personally think that waiting nine weeks in COVID time is like saying, hey, we'll check in five years on something. Things are just moved so much more fluidly. But I think you need the ability to make some, some discretionary choices. It may be, I mean, we've thrown out chemistry, you may find that there's a class that just doesn't, is not working online. It's just doesn't, for whatever reason, there's significant challenges for a cohort that doesn't work, and you say, you know what? That's a targeted group. Somehow we have to bring this group in to fix it. So I think you need the flexibility. I personally really like the idea of starting the fully remote with a targeted group. Start small, let's be conservative, let's get a good idea how the building works, let's limit the mixing. You can always add on as everybody feels, gets comfortable with wearing a mask, socially distancing, figuring out where we're putting everybody in the building. But, so again, I think, I think to me, that's the really, the conservative, smart route to go. And then again, you'll learn as time goes by, what works and what doesn't work, and you'll add and change. And it may be, I mean, again, it may be like chemistry has to come in for this unit, or some other class has to come in, and you'll figure that out.
Michael, did you guys say that?
How do you see students who choose a full or remote option fitting into either options one, two, or three?
So option one, with everyone back in, I'm not, again, I don't, I, that's going to have to be something that we'll look at, who the students are that would like to be a fully remote. I do not, I can say this, I do not want to lose anyone to V-Lax. So I feel like our teachers are amazing educators. I feel like they can offer an incredible educational experience for students, whether they're remote or they're in person. And so I would like to do my best to ensure that we keep all of our high school students.
And in the, in the models where there's, you know, in, in, let's say like Model 3, where there's two days of, four days of remote instruction with, with the flex, would you just blend kids that chose, chose fully remote in with the same classes?
Yes.
Then, since most of the instruction is remote?
Yeah. If a student should, if a student wasn't able to come to the building, then they just don't come to the building, they can have their office hours from home. They just wouldn't be in, during the in-person flex, they would be accessing their advisor and their teachers in a remote fashion.
So you mentioned, we should assume ninth grade to be a targeted group?
Yes.
How, how does it look for them in, say, Model 3?
So we've-
Versus everybody else?
Sure. We've been doing a lot of work to, to talk about the ninth grade and get them oriented. We are setting up, I have a letter getting ready to go out to families, probably tomorrow morning, for ninth grade, to meet with administrators and small groups through teams. And then we're working on an orientation that would be small, very small groups in person here at the high school. So it would be tiny cohorts of kids coming in throughout a very long period of time. And then the orientation period for all students, we'd like to have a slow rollout of a few, and I think I've, I've spoken to, about this at previous meetings. And then as time progresses, we'd like to continue to bring small cohorts of ninth graders into the building on Wednesdays during, but we would, this would be with plenty of notification of families, so that they would be very aware. It would not be something that we would be doing last minute. It would be planned and organized, so people would know when their student would be asked to come to the building in the morning, on a Wednesday morning as a targeted group. We're working with the Brown Center currently to do some programming, and we are going to have them come to us and work with students, hopefully, and work with teachers, train teachers, so the teachers can work with the kids. So we're, we're hoping to do some of that work as well. So, so kids, ninth graders would be coming in as a targeted group, but not as a, necessarily as a full collective group. They would be coming in in small cohorts, working with their advisor.
So that, that's an option four, right?
So that would be option, yeah, that would be an option, and all these, and all the options, except for the last one where we're fully remote and no one's coming in the building, we'd like to bring in targeted groups. And as Catherine said, one of those, a targeted group would be the ninth grade. But again, we are not going to bring them back, all 220 at the same time. We're going to be bringing them back in small, probably in small cohorts.
Okay. So would it also work that way in option three?
No. That's, that's bringing back, that's larger groups.
Okay.
Denise, go ahead.
So as I'm hearing all this, I think it makes more sense to start slow with the high school, because first of all, as far as the possibility of transmission is from, you know, what we, the information that we have so far is that it's, it's greater with the older students. And as much as I feel like, I know that you would want to come in to the building, you know, they are able, as Al has pointed out, they're most able to handle remote learning. And I think it does make sense at the high school level to start slow. You still have the flexibility, if we do like option four, you know, to bring in those targeted groups as necessary, see how it works, and then increase the possibility. So, you know, even though it's like we're, we're talking elementary, bringing them in, to me, I see the value in starting slower at the high school level. And then I think it's not as much of a strain on our, our bussings, you know, our busing, it gives us time to work out how busing is going with elementary and, you know, so, I don't know, that's kind of what I'm leaning towards.
I have one, like, if, that, and I should know this, but maybe dementia's taking hold. So it's going to be fifth through 12, they all get a laptop, is that correct?
Yes.
And then we approve that, just, I-
The hiccup on that right now is that Dell, even though we ordered in a timely fashion, is now saying that the supply chain is, is impacting delivery. And we might not see delivery before October, Josh. And so what I've asked Josh to do is hang on to all of the old laptops and not send them back, and until we get the new ones, and we'll just redistribute the old ones.
So just, just because I'm not quite, I guess, has there been any discussion of, and not, I hate to complicate things, but given the idea that ninth grade would be a targeted group, option four for grades 10 through 12, and something closer to option three for ninth grade? Or is that simply too complicated with the flex schedule and?
I think, I think if you're looking at just, then if you're focusing on the ninth grade in option four, I would still be able to bring them in, because that's still targeted, targeted groups. Option five is the only one where you're talking about no one in the building at all. But with option four, if we're bringing in small, very small cohorts of targeted groups, I would still be able to bring the ninth grade in. It just wouldn't be the whole class together, as in the, as in the third option. It would be smaller groups of kids that would be coming in. It would just take us a little bit longer to get through the class, but we, we would still be able to work with them.
Okay.
Option four really is about, it's, it's very similar to what Tom and Al were saying. You're really talking about the least number of kids in, but, but those students really being thoughtful about who, who's coming in on what day, and really having a plan for Whereas option three, you're really talking about bringing in larger groups of kids regularly.
Yeah.
I know we're not discussing the details of athletics today, but if we were to choose either, I think, four or definitely five, I think I would have a hard time supporting also doing sports. If we're saying that pretty much nobody except for targeted learners are in the building, then we probably should not be having athletes here either.
That's a discussion we'll have in two weeks.
Further questions, discussion? Thank you, Suzanne. Are we ready to vote?
Could we again have, as we're voting, have the appropriate slide on the screen so we know what we're voting for?
One more.
So option one, fully return. Denise Day?
No.
Al Holland?
No.
Dan Klein?
No.
Francis Narrows?
No.
Michael Williams?
No.
Tom Newkirk?
No.
That's removed. Option two, 50% return alternating, alternating days. Denise Day?
No.
Al Holland?
No.
Dan Klein?
No.
Brian Sastaros?
No.
Michael Williams?
Nope.
Tom Newkirk?
No.
That's removed. High school three, remote with in-person flex. Denise Day?
No.
Al Holland?
No.
Dan Klein?
No.
Francis Narrows?
Yes.
Michael Williams?
Yes.
Tom Newkirk? Option four, Denise Day?
Can we have option four on the slide, please?
Oh, I apologize.
That's okay.
I was writing down.
Option four?
Yes.
Al Holland?
Yes.
Dan Klein?
Yes.
Francis Narrows?
No.
Michael Williams?
No.
Tom Newkirk?
Yes.
So it's option four that's chosen. Okay? Thank you, Suzanne.
Thank you.
Okay, I would like to take a break now. Five minutes? Five minutes?
Good evening. Jay Rashad, the principal of the middle school. And I apologize in advance, I have the most models with seven.
It says six at the top. Yeah.
It does.
There's six models.
He fixed it on the slide.
We have been putting a lot of hard work in on all these models. As Dr. Morse knows better than anybody. So, it's been a lot. But again, the first model is a full return. I won't spend a lot of time on that. That would be extremely, you know, difficult with social distancing. And, I mean, that's why we're getting a new middle school. The second model, model two, is having grades five and eight in school every day for a half a day. So, a half a group. So, let's look at, say, think of the eighth grade, okay? I have 180 students. I'd have 90 students come in the morning and 90 in the afternoon. If we did this, we'd have approximately 330 students in the building every single day. Again, that would be the AM/PM model. I'm not going to go over the benefits and challenges, if that's okay, because they're very similar to all other schools, just in terms of time sake. But I'd be glad to answer any questions on any of these models. It's kind of what the schedule would look like when the kids would arrive and approximately depart. Again, we would need some flexibility in terms of what that would look like in working with Lisa and transportation, et cetera. The third model is grades five through eight in school every other day. I think a couple workshops back, that's something Al kind of suggested. And I'm not going to tell that's the model that he prefers. But, for example, a student would come in on Monday, maybe on Thursday, and then also Tuesday and Friday. And that's kind of what that would look like, kind of a typical schedule. Then we have model four. That's each grade level in school, one day per week. So, for example, eighth grade would be in on Mondays. We would still do like AM/PM rotation with that. Or we could have the kids in and spread them out throughout the school. That would be about 160 to 180 students in each single day. A little bit more explanation on that. Again, for example, on Monday, grade eight would be in school, half in the morning, half in the afternoon. Same thing, grade five would be on Tuesday, grade six on Thursday. On Fridays, that would be grade seven. Model number five, this would be a hybrid. Fifth grade would be in school. Two days in grade six through eight would be remote. Targeted groups would still be, in all my models, targeted groups could still be brought in. Again, this is how that would kind of look. Keep in mind, again, grade six through eight is remote. Fifth grade could potentially come in, half of them on Tuesday, the other half on Tuesday afternoon. Same thing on Thursdays. So, again, grade five would be in two days a week. The sixth model.
I'm just sorry, grade five, they're in two days a week, for full days or half days?
Half days, Tom.
Okay. Okay.
This is model number six. This is a hybrid remote instruction with targeted groups, grades five through eight. Honestly, this would be the mode that I would prefer to start the school year. Grade five, we consider that a targeted group. And as well, I work very closely with Catherine and Andrea Beneskevich and, you know, my staff to determine other students that we need to bring in as a targeted group. And also the schedule at the end. The schedule that I'll show you in a moment would work in hybrid and also, you know, remote. But, of course, option number seven, that's fully remote with no one in the building, just like Suzanne discussed. This is the, you know, the crazy middle school schedule that Bill Sullivan kindly color-coded. Again, this schedule would be the same in remote or a hybrid. One of the things we learned, again, at the middle school that I mentioned at the last workshop is, you know, we need to provide more structure for our students and staff.
So, in this, it looks like the core classes are only a half an hour?
The core classes, there would only be two core classes per day. Particularly if the kids are remote, we're talking about screen time, you know, being less than 30 minutes. And we do synchronous classes in remote. Does that make sense, Michael?
So, the assumption here is that during the core time, there, it's a live instruction the whole time?
Yes.
Yep.
Yep.
Well, the teacher?
Yes, Denise.
So, going back to the number six, so that would be very similar to what we just approved for the high school?
Correct.
Okay. And it would be, so it would be that, it would be the Wednesdays that would, the targeted groups would come into the building?
They could potentially. And one of the things, too, even when we had relearning days on Fridays, we still had teachers and case managers working directly with students. So, not all students had, per se, Friday off if they wanted to. So, a lot of staff scheduled a very full Monday through Friday. Again, what I like about the targeted group scenario is it gives me some flexibility. So, all of a sudden, if I have, you know, fifth grade teachers or a group of sixth graders who are really struggling, you know, again, we would inform parents way, you know, in advance. So, it wouldn't be overnight, but, you know, we might need to get a certain group of kids in for some reason. Yep. Yes.
Yes.
I'm sorry, can you, I didn't quite hear what you were saying with that.
So, just repeat what Catherine said, Jay, into the microphone.
Do you want to say?
Punching up.
Yeah.
So, basically, within these models, if, for example, if you're looking at grades five to eight in school every day for a half day, the board could also look at a particular grade level, such as five or six. Doesn't have to be also seven and eight, or it could be five, six, and seven. Same within AB schedule, grades five through eight in school every other day. If the board felt like we're looking at capacity of the school in terms of amount of students, we could look at more than a grade level other than fifth as a targeted group to look at more instructional time. And then the hybrid on number five, that fifth grade in school for two days, it could be half days or on AB schedule because Jay has models for that already established. So, what happens is Jay's model becomes really complicated because there's much more than seven options within those five through eight grade levels, depending on how you're looking at students as learners. Because they are making that transition up to middle school. They're still very young, especially in fifth, entering sixth. And seventh and eighth becomes a bit more independent with their learning. So, you have some flexibility within those grade levels to look at those models.
Thank you, Catherine.
So, how would you use the time if you only had students in school for a half a day each week? How would you use those two and a half hours or so?
That's a great question. I mean, we really primarily focus on mathematics and reading and writing. And then, you know, try to get some UAs in there, science once in a while. So, it's not an ideal amount of time, but at least they're in the building, Michael. Yes, Denise.
I guess I'm thinking, you know, in terms of parents, and if you've got a kid in elementary and middle and high or whatever, that, you know, I'm thinking of it also from that perspective and not having three completely different schedules. So, you know, I'm kind of leaning towards trying to do something that's similar to what is happening either at elementary or at high school to kind of have some consistency there. And it sounds like what you're saying, can we look at, can we go to six again?
Yep, absolutely.
Or five, wait a minute, was it five or six? Six, I guess, is what, yeah. Because, again, that one is basically everybody's remote, but you're bringing in the targeted groups as needed.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah.
So, this is the identical model to the high school?
High school. Okay, got it. Yep.
One thought that's different about the middle school and the high school is cohorting is not as complicated at the middle school because they're entirely in teams.
Right.
So, the groups can be much more easily controlled, I think, than the high school. Because at the high school, they mix every period. And that's why it becomes very complicated.
Right.
How are the, how's the physical plant impact this? Like, to what degree versus the high school, which is a more modern facility? Classrooms are of appropriate size. You know, how does that physical plant differ compared to the middle school?
It's very challenging, but I think we can socially distance 10 kids in a classroom across the school and using all our spaces, like maybe the library or the gym or the multipurpose room. There's no way we could appropriately socially distance with everybody in the building.
Right.
It's a no-go.
Jay, when you mentioned how many kids in each one of these, that's, for students, that's figuring that every student that can come in is coming in.
Correct.
But we know that probably half will.
Right.
Correct? So, would that make, does that fit in better for social distancing and everything else?
I think it would. I think that what the survey showed is like a third of our parents want fully remote.
Yeah.
So, I have 675 kids. That's, you know, losing approximately 200 students who want fully remote. Sorry to have so many options.
No, it's, I appreciate your.
You know, Bill Sullivan knows we could create seven more, too, if you wanted us to, so.
A lot of work.
Dr. Morse, is staffing an issue with, I mean, you've done a survey looking at people who have health issues that would make it difficult for them to come in. Could you say something about that?
So, the middle school as a body has the most staff that have health issues that would prevent them from coming in. So, when, you know, the question came up earlier about creating a remote model at the middle school, it's relatively easy to do because we have so many faculty that really can't come in for health reasons. So, it wouldn't be an obstacle at all.
Do you have a preference? Honestly, Tom, I think if I could, you let me pick, I would pick the fully remote with targeted learners. And trusting my staff and counselors, et cetera, to pick in, you know, bring in the kids that we needed to start the school year. And as I've been reminded, let's hope this isn't going to be all year, that this will change down the road. But that's how I would prefer to start, I really would. And also focus on, you know, my incoming fifth graders in the work that we need to do with them. And how we do that is just orient them to the building and our teachers.
So, they would be definitely a part of your targeted group?
Absolutely, yep.
Can you explain how the model five, option five, works for a fifth grader? Again, so, Monday, Monday, it's fully remote.
Yep.
Tuesday, I'm in for half a day.
Correct.
And doing independent homework essentially for the other half of the day.
Correct.
Wednesday is relearning.
Yep.
Thursday is another half a day and half a day of homework. And Friday is a remote instruction day.
Correct, Michael.
Why did you, why did you structure it this way instead of just having them come in half the day?
Just trying to show you, you know, a potential model. I mean, we could do Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday. It just, it could be any day, really. I think the key is consistency for families.
Other questions? Are we ready to vote?
Jay, can you back it up to model one for the board? Thank you. You're welcome. Just stay there and manage it.
Yep.
Of course. Thank you.
Okay, model, are we ready? I'm ready. Okay. Middle school one, fully return. Denise Day?
No.
Al Holland?
No.
Dan Klein?
No.
Francis Narrows?
No.
Michael Williams?
No.
Tom Newkirk?
No.
That's removed. Middle school two, grades five to eight in school every day for a half a day. Denise Day?
No.
Al Holland?
No.
Dan Klein?
No.
Francis Narrows?
No.
Michael Williams?
No.
Tom Newkirk?
No.
That's eliminated. Middle school three, grades five, eight in school every other day for full day. Denise Day?
No.
Al Holland?
No.
Dan Klein?
No.
Francis Narrows?
No.
Michael Williams?
No.
Tom Newkirk?
No.
That's eliminated. Middle school four, each grade in school one day per week. Denise Day?
No.
Al Holland?
No.
Dan Klein?
No.
Francis Narrows? Middle School Four, each grade in school one day per week. Denise Day?
No.
Al Howland?
No.
Dan Klein?
No.
Francis Narros?
No.
Michael Williams?
No.
Tom Newkirk?
No.
That's eliminated. Middle School Five, hybrid fifth grade in school two days, grades six to eight, remote. Denise Day?
No.
Al Howland?
No.
Dan Klein?
No.
Francis Narros?
Yes.
Michael Williams?
Yes.
Tom Newkirk?
No.
Middle School Six, hybrid remote instruction with targeted groups five to eight. Denise Day?
Yes.
Al Howland?
Yes.
Dan Klein?
Yes.
Francis Narros?
No.
Michael Williams?
No.
Tom Newkirk?
Yes, that's the choice, Middle School Six, which parallels the high school choice.
So we've made our three choices, hard work, thank you all, thank you administrators.
So, go to the calendar.
Yep.
Todd, want to pick up the calendar?
Yes, so as Dan kind of asked before, clearly now that we've selected our models, there is an incredible amount of work that needs to be done to have these models ready to go. And so one of the first things we want to do is to make sure to factor in on the front end of the year, the time needed to get that work started. Based on last year, just for you, to remember, the Guild agreed to add a day on to the front end of this year to start the year, so we actually are starting with one additional day, which is August 24th, as a teacher professional day. Originally, we were scheduled to start on August 25th with teacher workshops. What we're asking for is with August 24th, extending the teacher professional days through September 1st. So that gives us seven teacher workdays prior to welcoming students in. And that would give us, not all the time we need, but a significant amount of time to really do the professional development we need, and also develop all of the internal systems in each building for kind of how we're going to manage all of these things. In addition to planning for the next phase, which is part of this proposal, which is to sort of do a gradual rollout of this new model, now that we've identified how the structure is going to work at each level, there's a lot of work to be done to orient the students and the families and the teachers, frankly, to how all of this is going to work. So our thought would be to start with students coming in on September 2nd, again, in targeted groups, small groups that are manageable, to be able to gradually do the orientation type activities that we need to do to get kids ready, with the idea over that two-week span, we can do all of that, and then be ready to be fully rolling with the models that we've just identified on September 21st, and move forward from there. So, again, this gives us seven PD days, and again, on all the models you've approved, we've also got the Wednesday relearning days that give us that PD time, but I can't emphasize enough how important the time that we need to do all this stuff is, and this gives us a good chunk of time prior to the start of school to do that. Happy to answer any questions. Yes?
Just again, in terms of total hours, where this September 2nd through the 18th are just sort of bringing small groups in, can we count those as school days?
Yeah, we have, the governor has granted us three days that we can use, so we've already done that. The, we still have to map out exactly how the second through the 18th component will work, but yes, a large chunk of that will count as time. Again, I remind you, we're on the hours calculation, so based on how we set it up, we'll be tracking those hours. In terms, and I always hate to use the term minimum standards, but the standards required by the state to, for instruction, 990 at the secondary level hours, 945 at the middle school level. Under the, any of these models, we need 165 instructional days at the high school level, and 166 at the elementary level, we're well, well within that, so meeting the state standard will not be an issue under these plans. But I thank you, Catherine, for mentioning that, because the governor did grant all districts three planning days right up front, just like he did when he called the emergency back in March.
So do you need, does this, I'm sorry, do you need a motion for this?
This is really about the calendar.
We need a motion to change the start of the student's year to September 2nd.
I believe in your packet is the originally approved calendar that you approved for the 2021 school year, to kind of give you a frame of reference. So this is really making a significant change to the starting point of school. Obviously, originally, the intent was to have school, the first day would be August 28th, we're saying the first day students would be coming in would be September 2nd, that would be the first student day, and then from that point on, we would follow the same calendar throughout the rest of the year.
So the motion is to adjust the start of the calendar year to September 2nd?
For, yes, for the student, first student day would be September 2nd.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out the motion, that's.
That's the motion.
That's the motion, yes.
So, can I ask a question?
Sure, sure.
So, my question actually wasn't with the calendars, the next slide, which is the ongoing review and assessment, which I talked to you about. It's like, I think that way, the line says every nine weeks, the administration, the board will reassess to determine whether to continue with a model or to change it, and I think nine weeks is just too long. I'm not saying that we'll make radical changes, but I think, you know, Dover is doing it at a three-week interval, which I think is too short, I think nine weeks is too long, I think kind of like the Goldilocks, in between, maybe it's six weeks, or that we come and we talk about it, because it's, a lot is going to change over that time, and it doesn't mean that we have to say, okay, we're scrapping a model, whatever one we picked, but that it allows us to make some tweaks to it.
Yeah, so you and I had spoken about the notion of like a 30-day, 60-day, 90-day, that kind of thing, yeah?
Yeah.
So, my concern about this change is around the reentry transition orientation period. Two and a half weeks seems like a very, very long time for orientation, and really, it has the effect of putting the start of the academic school year back practically a whole month from what the calendar is today. So, I'm wondering how much different this would look if we tried to achieve those reentry transition orientation activities in the first week and a half, and brought that, brought that back from the 18th to 11th, is the end of the orientation period.
One of the things that we're trying to sort out is, obviously, we're bringing kids back into an environment, we'll bring them into the schools, you know, particularly at the elementary level, we're talking about bringing kids in for half-days, and kids naturally, when they come into a school that they're familiar with, they automatically default to what they're familiar with, and we need to very carefully bring them in in very small control groups to be able to orient, and to make sure they understand how all the tools work, and to connect with their parents, to make sure their parents understand how all these things work. And although, I know, I know that seems like a long time, slightly more than two weeks, when you start thinking about bringing kids in in these very small control groups over that period of time, it's going to take quite a bit of time to get everybody in safely, and make sure that they understand all the new procedures and processes. I mean, my, as I think about the first, like, the normal first day of school, where we have the buses go out, they gather up all the kids, they come to the school, the kids get off the bus, and they just get off, and it's like, you know, in Ant Hill, they're going all over the place. Clearly, that can't be how the year begins, we've got to be very careful and controlled to make sure everybody understands, because I know that Misty used the phrase, kind of the new, the normal, establishing this normalcy, we really, we really need to be very careful about this, because if we don't do that, we run the risk of all the work we're doing being completely undermined by just not having enough time to make sure people understand it, and also to make sure parents understand how they can interact with the school and how that works. Did you want to say something, Catherine?
Yeah, so it does seem like a lot of weeks, but it's really 11 days when we look at actual school days it would be, because Labor Day is in there, and then we had the Friday off already in the calendar as a day off, so it would be 11 days. Obviously, elementary would not need such an orientation period if they're seeing kids every day to start, and they would probably want to start bringing those cohorts in, you know, I can't speak for Misty and David, at a more kind of rapid rate, but when we look at middle school and high school, the biggest feedback we heard was, you know, kids not being able to access certain things for their technology. We know that kids are going to need time with their teachers to be able to learn the different platforms, the different technology that each teacher plans to use. Also, the other key component to this is the social-emotional piece, and kids making connections with their teachers. Remember, our teachers are not going to know their kids as they've transitioned to the next grade. We had teachers who knew the students before they went to remote learning, and now they are not going to know most of the teachers. We need time for teachers to understand their students as learners, and to interact with them a little bit, so that once they are completely in remote, that they know a little bit about that student, and that student feels comfortable with an initial connection.
So how big are these small groups that are coming in?
They will be, well, they still have to sort out and plan this all out, we haven't actually.
Can they just give an example, Todd?
Yeah.
Suzanne and I had talked about the idea that, you know, to take the freshman class and break it over a five-day period, to take the sophomore class and break it over a five-day period, the following week, the juniors and the seniors, that would be 10 of those 11 days, Michael. You're taking 200 kids and breaking them into 50 kids a day. And then, of course, that won't be true, because we'll have kids who are remote, but it's still going to be a body of kids, 30, 35 kids a day, that you want to orient, freshmen in particular, you want to orient into the building, meet their teachers, everybody's in the high school needs to meet their teachers and make a personal connection.
If you didn't feel comfortable having the students come into the building, I understand, we do need time to do some training, whether it's remote or in person, we need time to train students on Schoology, we have some changes that faculty will be making with the utilization of Schoology to create some consistency, so kids will need to understand how to access their courses and work through some of that. Teams has changes, there's been some updates to Teams where there's breakout rooms and things like that, and so teachers will want some time to talk to the kids about that, whether they're remote or in person, just having the opportunity to work with kids that way, I think is really important. The other, the other piece is that it wouldn't necessarily, for high school, and I can only speak for high school, when we think about it, it's that period of time, there are days where there will be classes, we would have a blue day and a white day, but then we would break for maybe a day and just say, okay, after having those classes, let's talk about what went well, what didn't go well, what are some of the things that maybe we need further training on, and then sort of pulling some kids back into for some more training to help support them in their learning. So, so it's a gradual, it's a gradual start to the school year, but there would be some, there would, classes would be happening during that orientation period, but it would just give us some flexibility with the schedule with kids to be able to offer them additional support if they need it within, with some of those new pieces to remote learning. Does that make sense? As far as the high school, I can't speak to other, other schools.
Yeah, I mean, I think the idea that there's going to be some days that are normal academic days in there is not reflected in what anybody else has said until just now.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that makes a difference.
So the most, I'm sorry, the motion would be to adjust the calendar so that students start on September 2nd. We're not approving the details of the orientations, right?
No, we're just letting you know that that's why we would want to.
So I wonder if I could have a motion to adjust the calendar so that students start on September 2nd?
Removed.
Moved by Al, so seconds, that combined Denise. Further discussion on this? I mean, I think absolutely you need, well, you know, we're scheduled to 28th, that has to be changed, that's way too early, I think. And I think that's, so, and some schools are starting later than that, so.
Dover's not starting until September 9th.
So this is, okay. So, ready to vote on this? Denise Day?
Yes.
Al Howland?
Yes.
Dan Klein?
Yes.
Francis Narros?
Yes.
Michael Williams?
No.
Tom Newkirk?
Yes.
So, five to one, the calendar change is approved.
Can we change the name of relearning day, like Al had said, to maybe remote learning day? Just that, it just has a negative connotation from last spring.
Yeah.
If we can change it from relearning to just remote learning day, I think that would probably be, I think people have a bad taste in their mouth. And another question, I guess, would be, would snow days now be remote learning days?
Well, so that's.
Or is that, am I asking?
No, no, I think it's, actually, it's, if there's a silver lining, this is the silver lining. So, you know, if we run into a storm day, our faculty will be prepared to have students work remotely, so we'll never really have a lost day. In addition, we, the middle school is infamous for the oven that occurs, if last week was the first week of school, the first floor of the middle school would be unbearable, and the third floor here in this building becomes unbearable. So we also can legitimately look at heat days as remote days. I think that's one of the advantages of the cycle we went through in the last 13 weeks, is we can have a fixed calendar, and when necessary, you know, the elementary model in particular, where they're going AM, PM, we call a day, it, the teachers will be ready to have it be a remote day. So I think for the first time ever, we'll know when the last day of school is when we start school.
But we legally still have to put in the five days. Isn't that by law? We have to put that?
Yeah, we do have to, we have to have them in our calendar.
Right.
They have to have a place that we can make up time if we need it.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
That is a silver lining, I like that.
That's it, that's the only one I can think of.
And then the last slide was just, it was the point that Al was making about the ongoing, obviously, the ongoing review process is important, now we've established a model, we need to establish points in time where we're going to review and determine if we want to continue with that model or make adjustments. The dates that we've provided you here correspond to what would be quarter-end dates, and from a, on an academic basis, that makes a certain amount of sense, because you're doing a quarter, teachers tend to plan on a quarterly basis. That being said, you know, obviously, Al, any point regarding that?
So, we don't necessarily need a motion on this, but you know, if the consensus of the board is that's too long, we can bring it back in earlier, that's not a problem, we just chose logical milestones based on a school calendar. If board wants to see it sooner, we certainly can do that.
Yeah. Yeah. I was just going to say, I completely agree, I, you know, this is so new, and we definitely need to look at how this is all going, and make adjustments if we have to.
Well, I mean, if I look at that, if we did it every, I mean, I think if we did it every two months, that's, you know, that's, that's going to get us in October instead of November. It gives the board a pulse of what's happening from the principals, what are the strengths, you know, what do we need to adjust to improve? So it's, if we do it too frequently, then the board's business on other issues doesn't get done because it's being dominated by reviews. So I think, Al, your idea, you know, six weeks is.
Well, I think, I think we'd have to do it, if you're going to change, if you're going to make a change at nine weeks, you'd probably have to start looking at it at six weeks.
Yeah.
And I think six weeks would probably be a good time, and I think, I think that you're going to be making minor adjustments, that this is going to, you know, on a daily basis, you know, you're going to, you're going to learn things, what works, what doesn't work, and that's not going to be something we're going to be directing, you know, you're going to have to be improvising, assessing, changing, and I think it's, it's going to be a really challenging time for you guys.
And I would say, you know, if we discover something that is glaringly not working, we're not going to wait nine weeks to come, we're going to come and talk to you about it and immediately make the adjustment.
Well, I think that's what Tom is saying, that we'll adjust on the fly as we see things that aren't working as well, but when we get to the six-week mark, we can tell the board exactly what was working well, and the adjustments we made, and future adjustments we'd like to make.
So, we have concluded our work for this evening, the closing.
We have the bus lease, Tom.
What? Didn't we do the bus?
Did we do the bus lease already? Yes, we did.
Yeah, we did.
But we do have committee update.
What?
Committee update.
Sure, do you have a committee update?
Yeah, just policy committee, just to kind of give a heads-up to the board that I believe it's on our, going to be on the. I believe it's on our, going to be on the agenda for the second meeting in August to bring the lawyer in to talk about the new policy pertaining to sexual harassment.
Title IX.
It's very, it's very complicated. So when we were in our policy committee meeting, we decided that we really needed to, for the full board to hear all the reasoning behind the new policy, which is all from federal, federal regulations, so.
Other, other committee updates? Future meeting dates is indicated here, so could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Brian?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, moved by Brian, second, second by Al, okay? Roll call vote. Denise Day?
Yes.
Al Howland?
Yes.
Dan Klein?
Yes.
Francis Narrows?
Yes.
Michael Williams?
Yes.
Tom Newkirk, yes. We are adjourned. Thank you.